Kristin, there's nothing we don't do for you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council School Committee usual election hearing. Today is December 20th, 2016, and time is seven o'clock. I wanted to ask everybody to stand on the floor.
My pleasure, this is a private house in the United States of America. And to be proud that the world stands as one nation, and we are in this club, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's start this floor session. Um, and we will have our comments and feedback here. If you'll see.
Okay, first, uh, as we start my forty-first budget, I plan on giving you less information than usual to provide greater opportunity for discussion between the policymakers. But I couldn't resist putting together a PowerPoint based on the fact that we've got the, uh, new televisions available to, uh, to provide the public with better presentation as well as with Council and School Committee. So, let me get started. First off, what's the goals of tonight's meeting? One is to look at what the budget development and adoption process is. Secondly, for us to be able to provide some, uh, foundation information as far as things that are going to be a component of the budget that we have choices on, and other elements of the budget that we really do not have a lot of flexibility on. Also, it's to solicit public comment for Council and School Committee on the direction that the public thinks is important as we begin the budget process. And, uh, finally, it's a discussion of the Council and School Committee if there's any specific objectives or directives that they wish to institute this early in the process. Normal processes, manager and school committee would, uh, develop the budgets, uh, usually over the last five years, targeted at no more than a two percent levy increase in the, in the various, uh, in the various areas. Whether we hold to that process for the, uh, for the future is really a decision for, uh, the Council to make, since it's the Council's determination as to what the level of tax is for both municipal programming as well as school programming. It's certainly the responsibility of the School Committee to develop the budget and establish its priorities. Yet at the same time, they've got to work within the property tax availability that is dictated to through the Council. Certainly, when we put out the manager's budget and the school superintendent's budget, we provide recommendations based on the programs that we think are important, and yet at the same time, try to be able to minimize whatever the impact will be as far as taxation is concerned. The, uh, the next slide, uh, talks about our legal requirements. We publish on the town's website what the meeting schedule will be. We hope the people will participate and attend those sessions. The adoption process for the budget is one that's now underway. The Council has agreed to a, uh, a meeting schedule. That's also included with this packet. Tonight is the, uh, public hearing that's being held, which is shown here between December first and the fifteenth. The next, uh, process will be that the School Committee will be submitting their proposed budget for manager's consideration on February fourteenth. And my responsibility is to have a budget recommendi- uh, recommendation to the Council no later than March first. The Council's also agreed to work sessions. There'll be four of those that'll be reviews of the budget document on March first, second, sixth, and seventh. And the Council has a responsibility of adopting the preliminary budget by, uh, the week of March thirteenth. The, uh, once that preliminary budget is adopted, there'll be a series of two work sessions and public hearings that the Council will conduct with the School Committee. Those are tentatively scheduled at this point for the April, uh, twelfth and thirteenth. The Council then adopts the final budget on, uh, or before May first. If there are, uh, a petition that comes forward, uh, with twenty-five signatures, there can be a request where the Council will be required to, uh, specifically vote on any of those initiatives that have the twenty-five signatures before they adopt the final budget and during that bu- final budget, uh, adoption process. If after the Council adopts that final budget by May first, on or before May twelfth, uh, with two hundred signatures, uh, citizen petitions for increase or decrease in the budget of no less than, or no more than, uh, no less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be submitted. The canvassing authority would confirm the signatures. And if there was, uh, sufficient signatures, there would be a referendum that would be conducted on the, uh, Tuesday, first Tuesday in June following a, uh, following a Saturday in June. Hopefully, we don't get to that point. Hopefully, the budget adoption goes through its normal process as it has for the last, uh, five years, where Council's adopted budget by May first becomes the, uh, budget, uh, for the community for the ensuing year. The schedule is included, and again, that's on the handouts as well as on the town's website. I'm not going to spend any time with that. When we look at, uh, some of the foundation information that we want to look at is we take a look at the November, the state's November, uh, consensus economic forecast, where they look at what employment's, uh, looked for over the next five years, what the, the target numbers are that they anticipate. And then they look at, uh, what, uh, growth in employment is, is to be. I would say on the handouts under the two thousand seventeen, it shows a seven percent under the employment growth. That should be a point seven, just as the others are, uh, listed as point four and eighteen, point three. Uh, the, the forecast shows a slow growth, both in terms of, uh, new employment and shows a, uh, a personal income growth that's consistent in the four percent range, yet at the same time recognizing that, uh, consumer price, uh, colas will be up about two and a half percent. So that would net out at, uh, probably about, uh, a one to a one and a half percent growth, if in fact those numbers hold true. I would say that, uh, that the economic forecast that's presented in April usually provides us with better information as to what the ensuing year is going to be. This is the preliminary look that the state uses. This documentation is based on the, uh, combined Senate and House, uh, fiscal staff working with, uh, hired consultant economists. One of the things I would mention is that right now, the state's November unemployment rate stands at about four point six percent. That's for, uh, not seasonally adjusted. It's, uh, if it's looked at for a seasonal adjustment, which is probably a more accurate portrayal, it's at about a five point three at this point. So this is spread of about, uh, uh, seven basis points between what's seasonal and what's not seasonal. When you look at, uh, at unemployment rates, the adjustments are made based on the predictive increase in, uh, employment based on the season. During the summer months, you'll see increases in employment, uh, on day jobs. You'll see the same thing for temporary work, uh, in December. That's where these numbers would be adjusted, rather than just looking at the pure figures of how many people are employed versus how many, uh, people are not employed. Workforce in Rhode Island right now is about five hundred and thirty thousand. People are employed with about twenty-five thousand that are still looking, uh, for gainful employment. South Kingstown, uh, unemployment rate at this point, uh, tracking it over a, uh, ten-year period, is showing that we're down to a three point eight percent, uh, but that's not seasonally adjusted. The state doesn't provide seasonal adjustments for individual municipalities. But my, uh, my belief is that, uh, it would have about the same seven, uh, seven points. So we're probably looking at, uh, an average of about four point five at this point, which gets us back to where we were before the recession, uh, hit in two thousand and seven. So we're just about in South Kingstown, uh, from an employment base reaching where we had been. We are at the highest number of employed people at this point. There's fifteen thousand nine hundred and twelve that are employed in the community, and we have six hundred and twenty, uh, persons that are listed as looking for, uh, full-time, uh, work. When we look at municipal landscape, it's, uh, these are just, uh, more or less givens of things that we need to take into consideration. One is that, uh, that the, uh, people talk about the property tax cap in Rhode Island being four percent. Four percent is a max. It's not an objective, it's not a goal to be achieved. In fact, over the last five years, our average, uh, tax increase has been one point two six percent. And last year, it was the highest it's been in five years at two point seven six. So while we've, uh, continued to maintain well below what that cap is, I don't want people to think that just because the state allows you to go up four percent, anyone should assume that that growth is appropriate for the community because of the impact that it would have on, uh, on homeowners and business owners alike. Also, that the Council, uh, makes the final determination on what the tax increases are. Staff can provide the budgetary estimates and, but the Council is the one who's going to have to determine whether or not appropriate levels, what those appropriate levels of funding are. I also wanted to mention that unassigned fund balance, the Council's adopted policy is to range between twelve and sixteen point seven percent. Right now, as of, like, June thirty of two thousand sixteen, undesignated is, is running at thirteen point one five. So we're, uh, well within our target area. Unassigned fund balance is also important for us because we will be in the bond market early in first six months of two thousand and seventeen with the four point one million dollars in bonding for the rec center and million dollars, first million dollars as far as the schools are concerned. One of the things that I've also noticed is that we're seeing much slower, uh, growth within our taxable role. I'm estimating at this point about a half a percent growth. We've seen, uh, on average over the last few years, about a one percent growth. The one percent growth is probably worth about twenty-two million dollars in new taxable property. New taxable property with twenty-two million would generate three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you were looking and saying, well, is the three, if you're not going to raise taxes at all, the most you could increase over the existing levy would be that three to three hundred and fifty thousand. So it's certainly minimal and, uh, certainly would indicate that any type of budgetary increase will require tax, uh, tax consideration unless there's third-party revenues or state aid that comes into play. We'll also be looking at the seventeen, uh, eighteen year as the first year of operation of the Recreation Center. Council will recall that we budgeted that for a six-month period, uh, for the sixteen, seventeen year. So we'll be going to a full-year operation, which will, uh, require an increase in property taxation, probably in the, uh, one twenty to one thirty, uh, hundred and thirty thousand dollar range, unless there's third-party revenues that would come into play. Again, I've mentioned the, uh, the bonding that would, uh, we would be looking at. First-year debt service costs on the million dollars for the school would be about ninety thousand dollars. And the, uh, on the four point one, we'd be looking at a deferred principal payment for a three-year period, but still about a two hundred and ten thousand dollar increase. Because we're seeing decline, uh, declining debt service requirement, the net increase for next year will be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over what's budgeted for debt service, even though we will be bonding, uh, that five point one million dollars, uh, next year and first debt service payments will be in the seventeen, eighteen year. Another given is that we will continue to, uh, fund the annual required contribution, AROC, for OPEB. OPEB's worth one point six million dollars between the town and the school at this point of tax dollars that need to be appropriated for future benefits, uh, that will be provided for persons in retirement on both the municipal and the school side. The range is around nine hundred thousand and cost is South Kingstown municipal, and the remainder, seven hundred thousand, is within the school system's budget itself as a, uh, as a requirement. We will be looking at that one point six million dollars, uh, being a requirement, uh, for the next twenty-five years to meet what, uh, post-employment benefit requirements are based on, uh, the most recent actuarial report that's been conducted, uh, for the town. The, uh, this chart really is a presentation to give you some idea of what's, budget trends or changes have occurred. And I think the, the things that's the most important is when you look at the property tax as a component of your revenue statement. Over a five-year period, we've seen that, uh, the annual increase is over nine hundred thousand dollars. Some of that is because we're not seeing growth within local revenues. We're not seeing growth within, uh, within state revenues. So there's, uh, is, if your municipal expenditures are going to increase both on the town and the school side, you're going to see, uh, greater emphasis being placed on that, uh, property tax. One of the biggest losses is right at the bottom of the page, which shows the, uh, third-party, uh, revenues, which is the, uh, mostly the state aid to, uh, to, to education, where it's, uh, gone from twelve point three percent of your budget down to about, uh, about ten percent. As far as the, uh, the, we have been able to manage minimal increases in property taxes over the last several years for two purposes. One is debt service declining, uh, over the past five years, both on the municipal and the school side, has, uh, provided some relief in terms of being able to see expenditure increases for operational purposes, yet not seeing major increases in terms of, uh, property tax. We will be turning the corner on debt service, where debt service will, uh, be maintained at the, uh, at about a one point, uh, three million dollar range to one point three five million dollar range for the next five years. So we're not going to see a lot of change in that, but it's still a factor in terms of dollar amounts that have to be a component of the budget. They're not, they're not policy, uh, decision, uh, provisions. The, the next, uh, chart looks at the, uh, tax, uh, classification. And this is important to take a look at, uh, have we seen changes from one year? Where is the tax levy coming from? So you can see, in the current year, the tax levy, fifty-eight point five million dollars in, uh, taxes levied are coming from the residential base, seven point nine, or almost eight million, from the commercial base and so forth. The distribution that's here is one where we certainly would like to see a larger commercial base or an industrial base. That would reduce the, uh, the tax burden on the residential. We are, however, looking at, uh, last year, we went up by two point seven six percent. That increase in the tax levy was about one point nine million dollars. It's not a number that we would want to see repeated. The size of the tax role is also important. During the current year, uh, we had the revaluation. We finally got the tax role back to where it was prior to the, uh, to the decline that occurred in the two thousand eleven, twelve year. And we're above where our highest point was at four point three billion dollars of taxable, uh, property. The, uh, tax experience at this point to date, this is the five years, the one point two six, uh, percent increase on average. And you can see what those changes have been over the past five years. Right now, uh, the overall share ratio is seventy-five cents of every dollar goes to education, and that's education inclusive of debt service for schools. And twenty-five percent stays with the municipal program as well as the transfers that are necessary to senior programming, uh, and, uh, and debt. The tax role comparison, I put this chart in last year because I wanted to, uh, wanted people to understand what our role looked like in relation to other communities. You can see, uh, the town in Narragansett, which obviously is a much smaller community, has a higher assessment, uh, value than what South Kingstown has. And North Kingstown, which has a much larger commercial and industrial base, has a smaller, uh, value. And you look at the, uh, the size of the taxable role in Westerly, which is smaller, uh, is also much larger. So the, uh, all of these communities are based on a plus ninety-five percent, uh, assessment ratio. So it just proves that, uh, that, uh, there's more taxable property in a couple of those communities than you would anticipate based on what the population would be. The other thing that's interesting here is the, uh, share ratios as far as where the taxes are coming from on residential. You can see North Kingstown has a better situation in terms of only seventy-five percent coming from, uh, from a residential base, but that's largely because of the monies that would be coming in from the Quonset area. Some of that, and in fact, more of it comes in not just through property tax, but through payment in lieu of taxes. But you can, uh, you can see that, uh, we're relatively consistent with the, uh, the Westerly, uh, area as far as the distribution of the, uh, of the ta- tax classification and, uh, well below what Narragansett says, where there's, uh, much less of a, uh, res- uh, much, much less of a commercial base. One thing I would mention is we show that the tax rate for residential in, uh, Narragansett is a split rate. That's changing this year. I think you've seen enough in the newspapers where they're going to be going to a, uh, to a single rate. What that rate is, I'm not sure what it'll be, but, uh, next year, there'll be consistency with each of the, uh, Washington County communities that, uh, will have one tax rate regardless of the classification of the, uh, the property. The, the next sheet is really a continuation of what was just presented, and it looks at the tax levy of each of the communities. So you can see, our tax levy is sixty-eight point five million. This was in the fifteen, sixteen year. This is the most recent year that the state has, uh, provided the data on. And you can see the size of the, uh, levy in, in North Kingstown, while still a smaller community is, uh, is, is larger. And we're right on par with where Westerly is, is a smaller community, and Narragansett is well below that. But what we look at is, when you look at the levy per capita, how much are we collecting for each person in the community? We still have the lowest within that area at two point, uh, one six, two thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. These numbers will change over the next, uh, you know, for fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen, but they should stay relatively constant unless any of those communities have had major changes in the size of their levy, which they haven't. One of the other questions that I get is, uh, pertains to municipal retirement systems. We do not have any private, uh, pension systems in South Kingstown. The, uh, uh, the systems right now, as of June thirty of two thousand sixteen, the, uh, uh, actuarial reports were just out, uh, last week, show that, uh, each of our, uh, funds, we have three separate funds. We're now at a ratio of eighty-six percent. You will note that the police liability, uh, is, uh, at a negative six million as far as the, uh, net value. That seventy-eight percent is below the eighty percent threshold that allows for members of the retirement system, from the police retirement system, to see a collar on a yearly basis on the first twenty-five thousand. Until that gets to eighty percent, uh, those numbers will, will remain, uh, without a collar, I think for every third year, is it, every third year, rather than on a, uh, on an annual basis. What we would hope to see over the next few years is that seventy-eight point nine percent to come in over the eighty percent. We don't, we do not set the rates as far as the percentage rates to, uh, for retirement, either for teachers or for any of the municipals. Those are set through the actuarial reports that are done through the, uh, through the retirement board. We are seeing a slight decline in retirement rates that will be assessed for the, uh, sixteen, seventeen, uh, six, seventeen, eighteen year. And we'll probably see about, between a fifty-five and sixty thousand dollar reduction in cost that will have to contribute, uh, in that year, which is, uh, somewhat good news. When we look at, uh, state aid, state aid's a very important component, both for the schools and for the municipality as far as, uh, aid. The pilot program is about twenty-two percent of what the value would be, taxable value would be on the hospital. That money's going down on a yearly basis. It went back up, uh, when the, uh, General Assembly decided to put more money into that program globally. It had been, uh, initially started at, uh, twenty-five percent, went down to about nineteen, and is now back at around a twenty-two percent. We would hope to see no changes in the aid program. As you can see, the incentive program was done away with last year. Where we see the most monies coming in are those taxes, which are really local taxes that are collected through the state. These are the pass-throughs. And those would be your meal, your hotel, uh, the motor vehicle excise, as well as the, uh, uh, public service corp. Public service corp is for utilities. What the state does is it charges one rate overall, uh, for all values for utilities. These would be COCs and, uh, National Grid. And they then distribute the money back to the cities and towns on a per capita basis. So where we've seen a bit of an increase there, but that's based on an increased assessment value that the state used on assessing, uh, those types of utilities. We've seen increases as the economy's, uh, gotten a little better as far as the, uh, meals tax and for the hotel tax. We would look for that to continue to, uh, uh, provide us with good, uh, good service in the future. I will talk, uh, in a couple of minutes about the motor vehicle excise tax because there's some real concerns as to where that is going with the next session of the General Assembly. The, uh, the next chart just simply, uh, takes a look and you can see, uh, where the aid to, uh, to cities and towns has been and where it is, uh, and forecasts to, uh, to go. So again, if we continue to see all the programs that were in place in the current year, we would see about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar increase in state aid over what we had budgeted in the current year. I mentioned earlier the tax role projection. You can see that we picked up, uh, point seven one in the fourteen, fifteen year, point nine seven in the fifteen, sixteen year, uh, and then we had revaluation. So last year's revaluation took us at five point seven, which certainly isn't something to consider when we're trying to put together projections. What I have looked at is what the Tax Assessment Office has recorded to date, which is around nineteen point five million dollars. We expect to pick up another three million before June fifteenth of next year. So that's about a half a percent. As far as motor vehicles is concerned, we're assuming, uh, a rate growth, a rate of growth of about two percent on the taxable values that are there. Overall, it'll be about a twenty-seven million dollar increase. And certainly, these estimates will be made again by March first, when I put out the budget document. But we're projecting the five percent, uh, five tenths of one percent, half a percent growth on taxable property and about a two point two as far as the, uh, value on motor vehicles. When I look at the preliminary expenditure considerations that are necessary for putting together municipal budget, I'm looking at, uh, existing service levels to be maintained. We're also looking at, next year, we have contracts in place for all of our municipal employees. Are set at two point two five percent on, uh, base salary for the current year. And for the members of the police units, two point five as a, uh, as an increase. In fact, for the lieutenants, we're seeing a two point seven five. That's a limited adjustment that's, that's there. I'm also looking at the need for adding three additional full-time positions. One would be in the utilities department in wastewater. We would be adding a master mechanic, but we would also be reducing a lab technician. So the net value would be a change of around ten thousand, ten thousand dollars. We're also looking at starting a new detective sergeant in, uh, in the police department with a start date of January first of, uh, two thousand and eighteen, so that we would not pick up a full-year cost, or rather, a half-year cost. The same with an equipment operator within the public services department. We've talked about for years, uh, within the highway department, we've run, uh, two, uh, two positions short since two thousand, I think, two thousand and seven. We're looking, uh, with some of the increased work, uh, efforts that's required in that department to bring back one of those operates. Obviously, until we see what the overall budget impact on both the revenue side and the expenditure side, these are positions that I'd like to see incorporated, but obviously understand that, uh, they've got to be able to, uh, be properly accommodated. We're also looking at the elimination of one position, which is the real estate appraiser position, which is, uh, is currently a full-time position. position, which is currently a full-time position. What we will be doing is using part-time or contract dollars, about ten thousand dollars a year in contract dollars for a real estate appraiser to assist in doing some of the field measurements with the assessors office, rather than having a full-time individual there. Based on the limited growth that we're seeing, we really can't justify keeping that position in place in an effort to try to get these other positions in place. So I'll be recommending those types of revisions. We're also looking at, you know, about a six to a seven percent. We're not sure what that's going to be yet. In terms of healthcare cost increases, the schools will be looking at about the same. Cost would be probably in the hundred and forty to hundred and fifty thousand dollar range as far as what that cost increase would be. Additional items I wanted to talk about, pension contributions, we're looking at around that fifty-eight thousand dollar net reduction that I'm assuming. We're looking at the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that is in the debt service for both municipal and school. The schools will be going up a hundred thousand, and the town will be going up twenty-five thousand. But it'll be overall, an increase, we'll be putting out one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that purpose. We're also looking at, there's a large increase currently in the capital budget presentation. That will have to be reduced in scale before we finish the budget on March first. We're going to need to get that down closer to what its current level is. I think in the current year, it was one million, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. We're going to need to get closer to that from where we are right now. There's going to have to be some shaving done. I think the schools will be in a similar position with their capital programming as well. We're also looking, as I mentioned earlier, on the Community Rec Center is an opening. One of the things that I would recommend that hasn't been done in the past, we have in the past indicated to work with a margin of a two percent levy increase. I think more importantly this year, we should be looking at no more than the two percent, but also documenting what one percent and zero percent would mean. And not just simply saying it's going to mean that we're going to cut one point five million dollars out of our budget, but rather to provide the documentation as to what the specific cuts would be. I think then there can be a much better discussion as to what both council and school committee are trying to accomplish. So I would ask that when the budget is submitted to me, that it documents no more than the two percent, but also shows if the council directed one percent, or if the council directed no increase, what the impact and implication would be. Because I think right now, what we'll be talking about tonight is what the range would be when Kristin does her presentation. But my concern isn't what the range is, it's what the specific value of that range would be. And so that that can be general discussion or specific discussion between the two policy Revenue statement. As I mentioned to you, I'm concerned on motor vehicles. I think you've all heard the discussions. Right now, the tax levy statewide for motor vehicles, it brings in around two hundred and fifteen million dollars. The speaker has suggested that he'd like to see the program deleted over a five-year period. Well, that would mean that they'd have to bring in two hundred and fifteen million dollars if they were going to make all of the communities whole. When we look at South Kingstown, if you took twenty percent, which is the five-year phase out, you would be looking at about forty-three million dollars in the seventeen, eighteen year. That would need to come through new state taxes to reimburse municipalities if they were being held harmless. I would doubt very much that that's what the plan would be. Because the thirty-nine cities and towns all have separate tax rates and also provide different exemption values, the city of Providence, for instance, has a sixty-dollar tax rate per thousand and a five-hundred-dollar exemption. We have an eighteen-dollar and seventy-one cent tax rate and a three-thousand-dollar exemption. So if we were only being made whole for what we're losing, it would mean that there would be a disproportionate amount of money going to those communities that, it would be similar to what they've done with state aid to education, where you would have the poorer communities, allegedly poorer communities, obtaining a greater share of the dollars that would be distributed. So at this point, until we see what that program is going to be, or how it would be implemented, what we may see is a universal tax rate established, and we may see that the distribution is done based on what that universal rate would be. Because our rate is one of the ten lowest in the state, we need to pay particular attention to where they're going. This won't be decided by the time council adopts a budget. So I suspect that this will be a budget component that won't be determined probably until the budget is adopted in late June. It makes little sense, when you look at the two hundred and fifteen million, if you take the forty-three million, we're one point seven percent of the total value. So this could mean as much as seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. If you were looking at it in terms of them saying we're going to wipe out that first forty-three million dollars, it would wipe out, my estimate, probably around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We collect as far as motor vehicles, probably around three point eight million. So it does have some major impacts. It could be, we could be held harmless and it not be a problem. We could end up getting a greater advantage because of the low tax rate, but until we see what they're going to do. When we look at, usually Rhode Island looks at Connecticut and Massachusetts. Connecticut has a different system where they take seven thousand dollars worth of assessment value off of the value of the vehicle, and then what they also do with the seven thousand dollars off is they take seventy percent of the value. So there's a lot of different ways that they can approach this. How it's going to impact each of the thirty-nine cities and towns is yet to be seen. Non-property tax revenues, I'm expecting to see in the area of seventy-five, no more than a hundred thousand dollars in increases in that category. The state aid, as I say, if it's held harmless, would be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Unassigned fund balance, I am going to be recommending that we continue to decline, declining use of the unassigned fund balance from six hundred down to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was at one point up at one point two million dollars a year. We brought that down. What we also need to do is to reduce the size of our surplus on a yearly basis that's targeted to reflect the amount of money that we're going to be feeding into the budget. So we shouldn't, so we should be looking at this. That means that when we look at uncollectible taxes in the given year, we should be looking at reducing what the overlay requirements are by several basis points. That will reduce the amount of the tax levy that would be necessary. But these are all important things that we need to do in advance of being in the bond market, and we will also be in the bond market over the next six years, an additional three times, or at minimum, two more times. So we've got to be concerned with how our role looks. We have to be concerned with how our surplus position is stated, and we have to look at what the levy increases are on a yearly basis to continue to show strong performance as far as municipal budgeting. This brings me finally to getting to the performer itself. The performer is really not a budget. It is a performer which is nothing more than taking known factors in the current year and forecasting a two percent increase. So if you look at this, we're looking at, what would the budget look like with a two percent escalation on general government, public safety, public services, recreation, library, and insurance and contributions? The debt service is a fixed, would be a fixed number when we look at the tax levy, and the capital budget would be a fixed number based on what the council adopts before February first. And again, I don't see it staying at the one million, five hundred and nineteen thousand. But let's say that we had a general fund budget of twenty-three point seven million dollars. What would the implications of that be? Well, if we take a look at the next sheet, this is a different way of looking. I've shown you what the budget would be on a programmatic basis. Now I want to show you on a functional basis. So what we're looking at is, if you've got labor contracts in place, which you do, and the labor contracts also control your benefits, which they do, then you've got seventy-six point four percent of your budget that's tied up in those two elements. The way you adjust those down would be reductions in staffing. That's the only way that you will, because you've got the labor requirements based on your schedule of values for each of the different positions. The capital budget is not a fixed number, so that can be adjusted. Insurances and agency supports, the insurances are not something that we're going to be able to control much of, because we're buying insurance for a general liability property, workers' comp. Those are items that are going to have relatively fixed costs. We don't shop for those. We establish those based on working through the insurance trust. Materials and supplies is a flexible number, but it's also only twelve percent of what that twenty-three million dollar number would be. So what I'm trying to present here is, there isn't a great deal of flexibility unless there's significant change in the program that you wish to administer. When we look at the performer budget on the revenue statement, this again is looking at, well, what's the tax levy that's going to be necessary, and where are the dollars going to come from? Our revenue statement has a negative revenue that's shown there, that what that is, is that's the amount of money for property taxes that are collected that go out to the different agencies, whether it's the school department, whether it's the senior service program, whether it's the rec center. So that's fifty-four million dollars goes as a negative. So the bottom line is about sixteen point five million dollars that you end up having for property taxes that support the general fund. So when you look at your general fund pie chart, and you say, okay, where does the revenue come from? Seventy cents of the dollar would be coming from the property tax. Your unassigned fund balance, the five fifty, down from six hundred, two percent. The tax transfers there from the school, that hundred and forty-six are made up of maintenance of the ball fields, the resource officer, and IT supports. But local revenues are in fourteen percent, state aid's about eight percent, and prior year taxes, four percent. So again, there's not a lot of flexibility that we're seeing in some of these numbers. We will, these are what I would forecast today. My forecast may be somewhat different by the time we get to a March first date. So what does that mean? We talked about the general fund, but the general fund's only one component of the property tax. So when we get to this next chart, this next chart says, okay, well, what's the property tax levy requirement? So the school transfer, and that's shown at the two percent. Again, not that I'm suggesting that it should be at two, but rather because on a performer, we've used it as two. The seniors, we're showing that at two. The community services, community recreation, we're showing at a preliminary budget that we would be looking at at three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, up from a hundred and seventy-one. And then we're looking at the debt service, which I've already referenced, as far as, that's both town and school, and we're looking at the transfer that comes through the wastewater fund for, to the general fund as an aid. So that's that fifty-four point five million dollars that I showed you on the previous page is a negative number. And then you've got the sixteen point five million that's needed for property tax. So you end up there with a seventy-one million dollar tax levy. With the tax levy at seventy-one million, you then have to add in what your, the taxes that you're not going to collect in the first twelve months that the taxes are due. Those are the ones that are going to be collected as a prior year tax the following year. That's the nine hundred thousand dollars that's there. That's also the money for veterans exemption. It's the values associated with the elderly exemption. Scratch the, we take the veterans off separately. This would be for dealing with those taxes as well as erroneous assessments. It's down from the nine hundred and eighty thousand in the current year, because again, I'm looking at, we should be able to reduce that and still be able to return a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus, which then would be able to go into the following year's budget. This all told says that you could have a two percent increase in your overall program and still end up with about a two point two-six percent increase based on the different factors that I've listed here to you. So it's, this is not the target that we're looking to hit, but rather, this is if those factors that we've incorporated into the presentation were in fact the reality. This chart gives you a better idea as to where does the tax levy go. So you've got seventy-two point eight percent going to the school transfer, the rec center a half a percent, school debt, one percent, and so forth. And so you have a better idea as to why you're raising the taxes and where they're going to. The final chart, as far as the performer is concerned, is, okay, if that was the tax levy, if that was the amount of the overlay and the elderly abatements that were necessary, what would it mean as far as tax implication? It would mean that you'd see the rate, based on the tax roll that I've forecast, as well as the expenses and the revenues, would be up about one point seven percent, or about a twenty-six cent tax rate increase. So we'd go from the fifteen dollars and nine cents that we're currently at, up to about fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents. On an average home, be under a hundred dollars, but it would still be almost a hundred dollars in terms of tax implication, to the average home, which is in at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you can see, I think that's on the high end of where we want to be, based on where we were in the past year. Just a couple of added slides. I wanted you to have record of where we stand as far as unassigned fund balance. Again, we're forecasting that we can get up to see a moderate increase in that as of the end of this fiscal year, based on a projected eight hundred thousand dollar surplus. That's just a paper number at this point, but the true number that we look at is the unassigned fund balance as of ten million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, or thirteen point one five. That's a real number. We'll talk about debt service when we do the capital budget next month, but this chart is there for you, so you get an idea of, when we set up the debt service fund, we set it up so that even though there would be spikes in the debt service requirements on a yearly basis, that we would try to smooth out what the contributions would be, both from municipal and school. So this shows that these are the tax appropriations that are necessary versus the tax, what the debt service cost requirements will be for the year. And as you can see, in the current year, seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, we're at one point two million. We'll go up to one point three two five next year, and we'll stay no higher than one million, three seventy-five. And that's predicated on the fact that we will continue to fund the additional four million dollars in school bonds that have been forecast in the initial publication of the capital improvement program that the school committee submitted to the council. Capital budget, again, this is what we'll deal with come the first of next month, and we'll go over each of those items at that time. As you can see, other than the general fund, there are some increases. The senior service program's the first time we've broken that out from general fund, because it is a standalone fund, so it would have its own capital items. And you can see the school department is forecasting about a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in their budget. Water and wastewater funds, while those dollar amounts that are listed there, none of those have any impact from a property tax perspective. They come just from the rate base itself. We are still looking at about a twenty-seven point two million dollar improvement program as we go. We are still looking at about a $27.2 million improvement program as we go forward with the capital budget. The capital improvement program is a real important component for the community. We need to stay ahead of our facilities, and we need to make sure that we maintain those facilities. It reduces overall liability exposures that we have if our buildings, as well as our grounds, are safe. But it also is a fine balancing act. The last page just shows the breadth of change within the capital program based on the various funds that are listed there. And if they all stayed at the level that they were submitted at, what that increase would be on a capital budget basis of spending 276,000. Again, that's something that's going to have to be evaluated both by the school committee before they present to me on Valentine's Day, and it'll also be one that the council has to consider. So with that, I've completed. With that...
I'm curious, how does the revenue through payment in lieu of taxes align with states?
How does it align with? Could you use your microphone because I'm not...
I was wondering how the figure that we receive, you know, 1% of payment from the payment in lieu of taxes aligns with the state's formula recommendations that allow towns to, communities to be reimbursed for up to 27% of what they would have collected in property taxes from certain...
Are you talking about the hospitals, the money that's...
I just wondered, I just wanted to know educationally how it aligns. Like, are we, is that payment in lieu in taxes in alignment with the other towns around us?
No, there isn't any relationship there. It's really how much money the state puts into that budget item, because what they do is they come up with a bottom line amount of money, and then they look at what the value is of all private colleges and all private universities, colleges and hospitals. In the state, they take the gross amount of assessment value there, and then what they do is they distribute, they distribute what they're using as a bottom line number. So it can change on a year-to-year basis. Payment in lieu of taxes is not just on the state reimbursement program. There's a payment in lieu of taxes for units that are income subsidized, that subsidized units, where it's a percentage of the rental income is paid in lieu of property taxes. And that's a state dollar amount, which is, Jean, help me out, what, 8% is it? 8% of what the income is. So if you had, if you had, if you had $100,000 worth of rental income, they would pay us $8,000 for what would have been the property tax bill. There's been a movement in the state to increase that to 10 or 12%, but there's been a battle on both sides of that argument on whether the 8% should stay as a, as a flat number.
Just to clarify, I wasn't thinking specifically about the hospital, which I value greatly. I was just wanting to understand more about how our payment in lieu of taxes aligns with other communities. But thank you.
Other questions, comments? If not, I'm going to turn the, turn this over to the school department.
That's probably full screen, but that's, that's fine for me, if it's fine for the audience. Thank you so much for having us. It's always such a pleasure to come, and now that we have extra table space, it's even more terrific due to your lovely new technology. Oh, I've got one. Oh, you want me to, you want us to click it? Okay. Got it. Just here. Yep. Okay. Thanks. Got it. I might hit the eject. So typically, when I, when we come to you and we meet together for the first time each budget season, we talk about three components of the school department presentation. One is our mission statement that really drives all of our decision, our demographic and achievement data, which tends to change a little bit from year to year in our budget data. And the anticipated outcome, at least for Mary Ann and I, is that the town council and the school committee will determine the direction for the property tax transfer to schools, to which we then have about two weeks to create our budget for the school committee to take a look at in the beginning of January. So the mission of our school department is, in partnership with families and the entire educational community, to educate and engage all of our students in the knowledge and skills necessary to ensure readiness and success in college and career. In regard to our demographics, you'll see that our ESL, or English Language Learner population, has not significantly increased with regard to our overall enrollment, but we have had some significant changes in the English language learners that are a part of our school department, and we'll get to that in a, in a later slide. We are still at 1% where the state is at 7%. And again, these are the most up-to-date numbers on RIDE, which, similar to the ones featured by the manager, are 15, 16. Our poverty rate has significantly changed for young children in our town. We were asked to go back to 2000 where the kids count data, it's not even available to me in this form, on RIDE website. We had 5.3% poverty in the year 2000, which rose to 7% poverty in 2006, jumped to 13% in 2009, and now in 2016, we're at 22% poverty. And so our landscape is changing in terms of the needs of families with young children. And the state is at 47%. This just is a visual. There are folks out there that are more visual learners. That's, that's how I learn best, and so I, I try to give you a pictorial representation of the data as well. In terms of ESL or ELL levels, I wanted to give you a sense of, depending upon the level of proficiency of our ESL students, there are requirements as to how much instruction per day. So we have a significant amount of Level 1 ESL students. That's a change from past years when I first arrived here as your superintendent approximately eight years ago. Most of our English Language Learner students were the Children of University professors, coming to us literate in their own native language and really transitioning to a second language. And that, that is still the case in small measure, but we have a significant population of Level 1 proficiency newcomers, and they're coming in in middle school and high school. It's been a significant change in terms of our, our support for them. So just to give you a sense, if this child comes in and is tested at Level 1 proficiency, then three periods a day, they are required to have ESL instruction. We had, just three years ago, zero ESL certified teachers. We have actually one pull-out program for West Kingston School, and we've had to make some sort of drastic staffing changes, including offering some professional development through Rhode Island College for many of our early childhood and elementary teachers who thankfully were willing to work with us to get certified so that they can receive students in their class. We're not permitted to pull students out for three hours with a resource teacher. So we have 44 students in six schools speaking 12 different languages. We have another 16 students to be screened. This data came in, where it's really hit us hard is Broad Rock, Curtis Corner, and the high school, to be a non-English speaker in a low incidence population town and walking into a ninth grade English class and, you know, an Algebra I or II class, needs significant support. So it brings us to our need that we did add to our ESL group. We now have two ESL teachers, so we moved from one to two. One of the teachers is actually moving between Broad Rock, Curtis Corner, and the high school. All three schedules rotate. It's become nearly impossible to service the students with fidelity, and as our needs grow, we know that we are required to add an additional ESL teacher. Please note also that I think as of this week, the Rhode Island Department of Ed is making more strict regulations on ESL instruction that might even add to the level of support we need. But for this coming year, we need to add an additional middle school ESL teacher, and that's not, not a discretionary item, it's a requirement based on student need. In terms of our special populations data, we were at 18% in 2009. That's vacillated, down to 12% in 2014 and 15, and now in 2016, 13% of our students have special needs. Rhode Island averages 15%, and the national average is the same as our average at 13%. And in terms of that need, we already know that for next year, we will require one or two, leaning more towards two, additional one-to-one special education teacher assistants. Neither the ESL physician nor the two teacher assistants are reflected in the pro forma. It's a requirement based on student need, and it's not a discretionary item.
Kristen, I have a question.
Certainly.
So this is the second slide that you said, there's a mandated use for additional staffing, but it's not included in your photo.
Correct. They're not staff members that we employ now. Our first, our first attempt would be to move around staff that we currently have. If there were less of a student need in one area, let's say that a student with a one-to-one teacher assistant was graduating or moved, then our first, our first choice would be to reallocate that staff member somewhere else. That is not the case at this point in time. These would be additional.
Right. Just clarifying that, these are mandated.
For next year.
For next year. But you have not included them in your photo.
They're not in the pro forma. That's correct. Sure. So the next slide shows you poverty rates by school, and it just, it shows that West Kingston is our highest poverty rate. We measure poverty by free and reduced lunch. It's not a perfect science, but it is a, it is a state and federal way of measuring. And so we have 24, my screen's not as clear as mine, but it is 24.1% at West Kingston and 22.1 at Peace Dale, very similar, but Wakefield's not that far behind at 21%. This shows our graduation rate visually, and then also in terms of the actual numbers, 2009, 86%, 2010, 86%, 2011, 83.5. Given, remember, this, this was the time where the kneecap was to be used as one of the requirements for graduation, and a waiver and not a waiver, and we went down to 80.5%. As you may recall, we put some significant programs in for credit recovery and summer school and Saturday school programs at the high school, and we've seen some great effects from that work, and our teachers have worked tremendously hard. We, in fact, yesterday graduated students who have our fifth and sixth year seniors at a special promotional ceremony. And again, I can't tell you how hard our teachers are working with the students that were a little bit behind. So now in 2015, it should say 16, 88.5% graduation rate. And then I showed you the graduation rates, 15, 16, four-year average is also 88.5. Students who graduate in five years is at 91, six years, 90.2. Then they give a composite, a final, and then they, on our district report card for RIDE, determine did we meet our target or not. This is our students with special needs graduation rate, and we track this for a number of reasons. There are, it's a, it's a report that comes from the state through the Special Education Census, but it shows the percentage of students that have graduated in a four-year, with their cohort in four years, has grown from 57.1% in 2011 to 72.4% in 2015. And of course, when that rate grows, then the dropout rate, special needs students dropping out or getting their GED, which unfortunately, I mean, we know is certainly not the same, but that's how it's classified for RIDE, has gotten significantly better, and aged out at 21 or graduated in five to six years has varied. And please note that students make a choice to continue until age 21. It is, it is our obligation to educate special needs students from age three to 21. This is a chart that just shows, shows a visual representation of the, of the earlier slide. This is our AP graph, and I'm forgetting where this came up. Someone had mentioned, I think it was at our last school committee meeting, we are, we're so terrific at advanced placement courses, this should be a track that other folks can come from other school departments and pay us to come to our town to do. It's a very interesting concept. We have done very well in terms of all categories, quite frankly, on the, on the AP exams taken, number of students who are taking the exam, scores at college mastery, and percent of scores at college level mastery. So typically, the more students you encourage to come into these very high-level courses, your scores go down, because now you're not touching on inviting just the super elite scholar. But that's not happened with us. We're inviting more and more students in, and we're still maintaining very high scores, another testament to our expert staff. We were on the AP honor roll by College Board. Only 425 school districts in the U.S. and Canada achieved this award. There were only a few in Rhode Island, Burriville, Narragansett, North Smithfield, Situate, and we were in there as well. Only Narragansett and South Kingstown have been awarded this honor for multiple consecutive years, so we certainly hope we're included in that category going forward. This gives you sort of a, an example of where we are compared to cohort districts, and we throw in Barrington and East Greenwich as, as sort of high measures, not necessarily in our same area of poverty or demographics, but certainly, certainly a nice to keep an eye on. And my coding system is usually green means good, yellow could be either us or pay attention, and red is a little bit concerning. So certainly don't want to make judgments about other communities, but our scores look pretty good. I've also given you the park results, which I'm not going to go over in detail, but it's here for you. It's not a new slide for our school committee discussions. We've been, we talk about them when they're published, then we delve into them during the retreat. And certainly, school-based teams and district-based teams are constantly trying to make certain that our children are achieving at high levels. This is only one measure of that achievement, however. So this is the park English Language Arts measure and the math. This is how we compare in terms of, to the state by school. This is, what I've done is rank all the high schools in the state to show where we are. It's kind of tricky with the high school because I'm not certain that, I know our high school scores are not commensurate with the other measures of proficiency. It speaks to, did our high school students take this test seriously? I think many students in the state did not take it seriously, and that was one of the features that led the commissioner, thankfully, to push away from the high school park assessment and towards the PSAT and SAT that we're taking for the first time this year. We had a very high rate of students take these exams, and they were free to them, which is very nice because not all families would, or could, had the ability to pay for it. This is our middle school rankings. You'll see Curtis Corner is about eighth in the state, and Broad Rock in math and fifth, Broad Rock is fifth, excuse me, in math, and Curtis Corner, eighth in literacy, Broad Rock, eighth, and Curtis Corner, 12th out of 61 middle schools. Elementary park rankings, Peace Dale continues to, to be a sort of a force to be reckoned with. They were second in the state in literacy. We're sort of cushioned in there by our two charter schools in, in South Kingstown, Kingston Hill Academy and Compass. And in math, Peace Dale scored third, and our other elementary schools, with the exception of West Kingston, scored very well. We're diving deeply into some of the concerns at West Kingston that they weren't performing at the same level they were the year previously. These are our district elementary report card. We can see that our attendance rate is at 96%. And this slide for elementary... And this slide for elementary schools shows the proficiency in reading and the proficiency in math compared to the reading and math targets, and does disaggregate by targeted areas that there are enough students presenting in. So for example, we didn't have enough students that were ethnically categorized themselves as Asian or Pacific Islander, but we certainly did in terms of Hispanic students, white students, multiracial, students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged, and again, students categorized themselves in terms of ethnicity. This is our middle school report card that features the same robust information and our high school report card. So we have one high school, but the middle school measures two schools, and the elementary measures three. So brings up another need. Due to the number of elementary school students on a PMP, which is a personal math plan, we will be required to add an additional elementary math interventionist teacher next year. This is an additional staff member, not already reflected in the pro forma. It is a requirement based on their need. If students are performing below level in math, we are giving them intervention services. I don't know why that's blank, or why I went over to Mr. Alfred's feature. I think I need that, a technical assistance, Mr. Alfred, because I just went over to your PowerPoint. Hope it's not a super secret file that I could uncover. It'll be up for all to see. If you all have your own slides, I can follow along where I left off. So as a reminder, the recommendations that we brought to you last year from March eighth, two thousand sixteen Town Council meeting, is that we had a gap closing committee and recommendations that were included in the fiscal year budget at the time from, again, we had an academic proficiency centers at the high school in Curtis Corner to support students academically before and after school with big projects, and also in retaking and redoing assignments. So we afforded thirty thousand dollars to each school for staffing and materials, and Broad Rock used some of their P account money to add a brief version of that for Broad Rock students, particularly in math and English language arts.
Kristen, before you move on, I have a question. It says this was in the last year's fiscal year budget, so was there anything new for the gap closing committee recommendations that we're spending money on this year or in this budget?
We actually have, except for the three items that I've already alluded to, there are no new programs, no new staff included in our budget.
Okay, and then was there any consideration to give in the academic proficiency centers at the elementary school level, or was it just the middle school and high school?
We would love to do the academic proficiency centers at the elementary level, but there are no late buses. And so it becomes a concern of equity in terms of, you know, which parents are able to pick up and which parents aren't able to pick up.
Okay.
And so that hasn't been something that we've brought forward. We have done this year for the very first time, an intervention block. And so, someone's car alarm is going off. You may have heard a little bit about that, because it's been an adjustment period, quite honestly. It's a time where the whole grade level is in an intervention half an hour period, and that's when the reading teachers are pulling kiddos, the math interventionists are pulling students, and it's a sort of a very precious time, not that our core instructional time is certainly the most precious, but this is another time.
And then I mentioned last year, I've worked with, I think, a private contractor that you have, Lauren Ansonelli, who works, does like a homework club at Champion Heights and other communities, and does different community events. Are you going to continue a private contract with groups like that, or people like that?
Are you speaking of Lauren?
Yes.
I feel like I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
But I totally can hear you, it's just an illusion. So yes, we are continuing with our program with Lauren Anicelli. And although I've not brought forth any recommendations in terms of new staff and new programs, I know that the school committee asked our high school principal, middle and elementary principals in an attendance work session a few months ago, what would be your recommendation going forward as any staff support to increase attendance? And so they have met. I've yet to bring that to the school committee, which I'll do in the beginning of January, but it is along the same lines of support.
Okay.
We've obtained new data on Lauren's progress, and it's quite wonderful.
Yeah, it seems very much in line with what the gap closing committee's trying to achieve, and I feel like it approaches a broader approach to more, not just academic, but looking at the whole picture of poverty and what we can do to address those needs for that population. So I'm happy to hear that you're looking at what's needed, and maybe a possible other people like her.
Kristen, have you noticed from these programs an improvement in the level of achievement for students with special needs?
It's early, but we are receiving some data that is very promising in terms of students, in terms of reading level and math level. We'll have a more formalized report to bring to you soon, but not this. So these are our SAT scores. Just to give you a sense, SAT changed this year. Gives you a sense of the new Common Core State Standards-Aligned SAT. The GED is also now Common Core State Standards-Aligned, so it's much more difficult for students to fare well in a lot of these assessments, unfortunately. And just to give you a brief identifier, in the old SAT, the one I would have taken, you recall people speaking of SAT words, so that's an SAT word, meaning it's a complicated word. And now aligned to the Common Core, it's a synthesis and analysis of words that open the door to college courses. That's how they're framing them. Nearly five thousand words and answers to almost a hundred questions in less than ninety minutes. And the reading passages are now not just at a text complexity level, they're also Common Core-aligned in the areas of social studies, science, and history. And so they're significant. And our kids are doing well, but there was certainly a small dip, as you, maybe it's not a small dip, maybe it's a significant dip, but there was a dip. We had two schools out of, I think, nineteen Rhode Island schools listed as commended schools. That was Peacedale and Wakefield Elementary School. And Peacedale, as you know, was selected as a two thousand sixteen National Blue Ribbon School by the US Department of Ed. Only three schools in Rhode Island were selected, Peacedale Elementary, Kent Heights Elementary, and Barrington High School. Only three hundred and twenty-six public, private, and charter schools throughout the nation were selected. So we certainly received that honor on behalf of Peacedale and truly our entire district. This is special education exit information. This talks, because there was a concern that, you know, we're just not identifying enough students in initial referral, and so we took a look at that in the gap closing, and said that one of the points that the experts asked us to look at, in addition to special education graduation rate, graduation rate of students in poverty, closing the gap on the PLPs and the PMPs, is did, are students meeting their IEP gaps? And are we still continuing to find students eligible at initial referral? So what you're finding here is the number of students that were exited due to the completion of their IEP goals or meeting their IEP goals. Students exited from special education for other reasons. They moved, they graduated, they reached age twenty-one, they transferred to a GED program. Students found eligible due to initial referral, which has in fact increased. The highest year noted was two thousand fourteen to fifteen. So what the data is showing us is that we're still continuing to find kids eligible, especially in the younger grades. And then our special education staff and families are working very hard to close those gaps. And then the last column is the percent of students truly exited because the gap closed.
Kristen, I have a question. No, that's all right, Alicia, go ahead. I was just wondering, in seeing the amount of tracking the students who meet their IEP goals or move and graduate, do we also track the students that leave because they don't feel their needs are being, or the families that decided to take their students into another district or another program, or somewhere else because they don't feel their needs are being met?
So last year, I believe I shared this with the council, but perhaps we didn't. We developed a tracking form, an enrollment form, and an unenrollment form that's used at every school office when families decide to enroll or decide to unenroll. It's a very simple form. It pretty much gives, like, where are you coming from, or where are you going, and what is the rationale? And most people are very forthcoming in their rationale, to be honest. We get a lot of them, so I don't, you know, the fact that I became the one who tracks these things, I should have delegated better and can come up with another human being to take a look at them. But then I log them. The school committee will get a copy of all of the reasons why. I haven't come across anyone saying anything about identifying their family members as having special needs or having ESL needs. I haven't come across, but they certainly have on some occasions said that they were looking for a private school or a charter school, or coming from a private or charter school. But a majority of the people are saying, we moved here, and we heard that the school department was pretty good. Or we moved out of state or out of the community because we couldn't find affordable housing. So that's most of what we're getting. I don't, we're not sure if every single family is completing them, but we are certainly asking every family. And then I give them off to Pauline Lisi, who double checks me, she's the assistant superintendent. And then the process that was that we gave them to social worker interns at Rhode Island College, who as a part of their internship were charged with following up with these families. So that's what happened last year, but that was through Scott Miller, who's not on our school committee anymore. So to be perfectly honest, we haven't figured out now what's the new plan for what we're going to do with the forms. One of the options could be certainly to have our staff follow up on it if they were willing to do so. But we are collecting the data.
I would love to have access to that data at some point when you have it cohesive.
It'll be onboard dots for the first school committee meeting in January.
Okay, great, thank you.
So on to the budget preparation, and we have all of the usual information for you. Our pension rate, even though the pensions are considerably different, especially for the certified rate group, we're back up to paying fourteen point one four percent, and that's an estimate, on the certified rate, and twelve point seven two on the non-certified rate. This is our consolidated resource plan, the monies that come in from Title I, Title II, IDEA and IDEA preschool. Understand that we're only giving you what we had last year and what we're projected to get next year has typically been similar, but the true projections is unknown till July of twenty seventeen based on the federal budget. We're being told by the Rhode Island Department of Education that there are significant changes expected federally, especially in the area of Title IV, which was an old category. We had many, many different pieces, like Title II was called the Eisenhower Funds when I first started doing this work, was to be used for science and math instruction, now it's for teacher professional development. So they do change, particularly when new leadership comes in. So the more information we receive in our federal allotments, I will bring them to you as soon as we know. This is our charter school enrollment, so you're seeing that our high in terms of charter school tuition was in two thousand six. After that time, we started a all-day kindergarten, and we started to see a decline in folks going out to charter schools. We're now at eighty-three. Eighty-three students are thirty-six at Compass, up four from the year previous, ten at the Green School, which is a high school program, thirty-six at Kingston Hill Academy, we're down four from last year. We don't have any students any longer at the Rhode Island Nursing Academy in Providence. We have one student at the Village Green. This is our career and technical center enrollment, so you see a majority of our students go to Charahoe. We have fifteen at the Met, nineteen in Charahoe, we have none at Davies. We have one student at North Kingstown, they opened a robotics program. Westerly, although there is a cosmetology school in Charahoe, we had a student who requested Westerly and was permitted to attend by the Department of Ed. So a total of thirty-six students. As you probably know, the Charahoe Regional Center is in litigation right now with the Rhode Island Department of Education. It's very difficult conversations that are being had about the difference between competition and the difference, you know, among quality, and how do you measure the quality, and what's the expense to sending districts in terms of tuition, because the tuition varies, and what's the expense in terms of transportation. I'm proud to say that our new high school principal and leadership team, and we have a handful of teachers who are thinking through career programs for the first time since I've been here. It's very exciting, because the community I came from, we had a site-based coordinator, which was funded through Perkins money, and that's the same situation that Rob Mezanati came from. It's of course the absolute worst time in the universe to bring forth a career and technical center program right in the middle of litigation, so we will stay tuned on how that's going to be. But we are working on a couple of ideas. This is the career and technical center graph. Career and technical center education has been a priority for our governor and also for our commissioner, and so I'm not surprised that students are taking advantage of the opportunities. It would be nice to keep them, certainly in our high school, that is what we strive to do, but the programs are wonderful. This is our slide that shows enrollment versus full-time equivalent decline. And as you can see, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we had thirty-five hundred ninety-one students and five hundred and eighty-nine point six FTEs, and that's all staff members, from administrators to teachers to exempt employees, teacher assistants, clerical support, custodial and maintenance staff. And then over the years, we have dropped certainly in enrollment. This is the largest year of a drop in enrollment attributed mostly to a large senior class that graduated, not as large eighth-grade class that moved in. We are keeping about the same rate of students who are attending charter and private and career and technical center and going, coming to our high school. We added a high school exploratory program, if you will, an open house, because quite frankly, I was driving by the Hendrickson signs and hearing the Mount St. Charles commercials as I was driving in and said, why don't we do this? And so at the next school committee meeting, you will see a wonderful video that one of our teachers, Ron Mattson, put together about the event. Our teachers have really embraced this, and so have our students. And we have, you know, gotten great feedback at our key stakeholders' meeting of PTO families this week that they've attended, you know, and we've come out as a shining star in some categories, especially given the technology at the high school that was said to us on Monday. So we, unfortunately, because we are one of the biggest losers in the state aid, except for the regional districts that also lost their regional incentive bonus, we are down four hundred and eighty students and down ninety-five point nine staff members. So I know that enrollment is based on birth, and it's based on birth rate and competition, but in terms of FTEs, a lot of the staff cuts unfortunately have been because we've been not willing to cut student programs. And every single year, for the seven years of the funding formula, we've had less revenue, and it's been very difficult. So it's been very difficult on our staff members, particularly the teacher assistant bargaining unit, who has lost many, many members. Just to note that as of fourteen Um, just to note that as of fourteen, fifteen year, that enrollment number includes outplaced students. Um, and there are fifteen students that, um, are counted in our enrollment numbers to ride that are not physically in our South Kingston schools, but certainly are, are South Kingston students. This is a, a graph that shows our enrollment decline and our FTE drop. Our state aid trend, as the manager alluded to earlier, um, we're now looking at, uh, less than twelve percent of our budget, um, supported by the state, whereas in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-six, uh, twenty-eight point nine percent was, um, supported by the state. This is the seventh year of the ten-year funding formula, unless of course they come up with another version of the funding formula, which we, we hope they don't. Um, this is a slide that shows the, uh, graph, uh, of what state aid has looked like to our, our budget. And remember, we're not a revenue generating group, so we rely on the property tax, the state aid and federal money. And we are not usually eligible for a lot of private grants because we are not a very diverse student population. And so, uh, we do have some, uh, Rhode Island Foundation grants. We certainly have, um, SKEF, which is a local educational foundation that has been very generous to us, but as in terms of large funding, we've not been eligible. Um, the school committee, uh, asked me to add to our, um, school budget history. It shows, um, we were able to get back to two thousand and one where our school budget was thirty-six point eight million. Um, and then you see that, um, really from two thousand and six going, two thousand and seven going forward, um, it's not changed all that much. And this is a, a visual of what the budget has looked like. Our revenue assumptions, as I said, this is the seventh year of the funding formula. We're looking at another reduction, um, that will be compounded by our student enrollment decline. Group home aid, we do have group homes in South Kingston. We educate, uh, children from all over Rhode Island. Um, we are estimated to have that included in, um, the governor's budget, um, at approximately twenty-two hundred and forty-nine thousand, but that doesn't typically cover the costs. Um, and the, the budget assumptions for local revenues, you'll determine, um, our, our range tonight. In terms of our, uh, undesignated fund balance, we're estimated to use four hundred thousand, which is fifteen point zero eight percent.
We, um, if you take into account that stuff that we have reserved, like what will be transferred in the capital fund, it's about two point, uh, just slightly under two point six million dollars for the fiscal year that just ended.
How much of that is already earmarked or designated? How, how much is already designated too?
Uh, we have four hundred thousand dollars, which is in this budget. We have a hundred thousand dollars, which we're proposing in this current year's capital. And we have four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that was included last year's capital that we transferred to the capital fund in August of this year.
So our Medicaid reimbursement was about eight hundred thousand dollars and is now down, um, to about five hundred thousand. Last year we received four seventy-three. In terms of our expenditure assumptions, unlike the town, we have three open contracts this year. So, um, by open, I mean we're negotiating. We start negotiating with the teachers at the end of January, so wages and co-pays are unknown at this time. I've put in historical data, um, for your information, but the salaries and co-pay are to be determined. Um, right after, uh, the school committee finishes negotiating with the teachers, they'll start with the ESP bargaining unit, teacher assistants and clerical staff, and then the Council Ninety-four custodians and maintenance staff. So those are really big unknowns right now. And, um, it's, you, I think, unique to South Kingston that we do them all in one year. It's sort of like a fun little marathon, but typically I'm used to sort of staggering so that we're always in negotiations with someone, but that hasn't worked out here. Um, our materials allowance has increased by two percent, which is an additional eleven thousand dollars. Our insurance has increased the working rate by seven percent in health, which is, um, estimated at four hundred and one thousand. We have had, um, more claims this year unfortunately, um, than, than is typical. Um, our insurance increased the working rate by four percent for dental, which is about twenty thousand dollars. Utilities increased by three percent. And then adjustments in rates for outside tuitions, Charahoe right now is at twenty-one thousand four hundred and three, and the charters are protect, projected at fourteen thousand ten. Um, we were asked by the school committee to include a slide that was sort of like the big picture impact, like what, what are the big, big ideas in terms of this budget? Um, the reduction of state aid of approximately four hundred and thirty thousand before taking into consideration the decline in enrollment, which as I said is significant. Um, salaries increase at about nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, FICA a hundred and fifty-two thousand, teacher pension obligation a hundred and ninety-two thousand, the MERS pension ten thousand, health insurance and, um, that I already stated, and transportation, an increase of a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, this has been our special education trend report for outside placements. Um, it was a, a document that I don't recall receiving before, but I'm sure that NESDEC prepared it for our special education office. This shows you a trend of about how many students are in outside placements and what the actual cost is, um, beyond our, 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 our in-house, um, obligation, um, to support special needs students. Um, and, and again, the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen estimate is very, um, fluid because students are in school now and our, um, parents and, and, and teachers are determining through IEP meetings whether that placement is, um, will still continue or whether students will be going into placements. And right now we're having a little bit of an uptick, just in the last two weeks, um, with, uh, group homes in, in our area, which really sort of ebb and flow in terms of when there are residents and when there aren't and what their specific needs have been. This gives you a visual, um, of that data. And then this is the, for me, the most important slide of the day. This is the, our pro forma, and, um, it's not pretty. So even with our enrollment decline, I think this is probably the, the most significant one I've seen since I've been here. Um, it shows that, um, with a zero percent property tax transfer to the schools, we'll be looking at, um, next week, starting two point six million dollars worth of cuts, and that's before adding the four positions that we're required to add. With a one percent property tax transfer, two point one percent. With a two percent, one point six, um, million, sorry, one point six million worth of cuts, thank you. With a three percent, one point one million worth of cuts. And with a four percent, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand worth of cuts. So while I absolutely could not respect our town manager more when he said to me, "Oh, and by the way, what, show us what it's going to look like at zero percent." Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to have that ready by the, by the beginning of January, but by March I may be able to show it to you because it's, it's the biggest dive I've taken. It's the biggest cut I've had to look at. And so I certainly will comply absolutely, but it will, it will not be easy. It will not be easy numbers. Zero is not a cut, you're absolutely right, right. We have no negatives, that's a good point. It'll still be hard, but we will do it. And then, this is the history of the property tax transfer for, for the town. Um, I, I don't know who asked for this slide, but it was so, um, sort of, it was reaffirming for me. I could not quite figure out why everyone was so darn mad at me when I first got here. So the blue is before Kristin and the yellow is after Kristin. And I would like to think one has nothing to do with the, you know, another. Lots of things happened. In the blue, we didn't have the PIBA weed tax cap. Um, we didn't have, uh, significant unemployment. We didn't have the funding formula. Um, we didn't have Commissioner Gist. We didn't have a lot of different things. Um, the motor vehicle tax piece, all of those seemed to collide when I got here. And I'm, I'm certain it wasn't my fault, it happened in other districts too, but it felt like it, let me tell you. Um, so when we were coming out of the good years where the, the, where the town was able to provide an eight point two percent, um, no wonder Bob Hicks was such a happy fellow. I, I totally get it now. Um, I got here and, 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 and I, I've gone to every, uh, school and talked to parents in every school and talked to teachers, and what I've said to them is, "You have been very generous with us." That there are districts all over the state that give, um, uh, less than zero percent because of the declining enrollment. So that doesn't go unnoticed, believe me. Um, but, but it has been a stark change, especially for our staff, and this is one of the reasons. And so we are doing with a lot less, um, people, a lot less very important people, especially in our elementary classrooms, and, um, and it's, it, it's also been noticed. And so, um, it's, it's clearer to me with this slide, but, um, I, I've lived through it with you and I've known that, you know, you've given what you could give, and, and that's been absolutely appreciated. This is what the visual looks like. And, um, my last slide, um, as the manager says, this is a process. The process begins tonight. Um, we wait for the two policy-making bodies to determine, uh, the pop, the property tax transfer amount that Mary Ann should start working on over the, the, the break. And we'll come together with the school committee and start looking at reductions. It's, it's not like this in every town, that, that you have to first look at reductions, but that largely, if not all, comes because we're underfunded, quite frankly, from the state. So thank you always for your support, um, and thank you for allowing us to, to share our demographic information with you. And, um, we look forward to further conversations until we put together, um, a budget for you on Valentine's Day.
Kristin, I could just make a comment. Um, um, I won't speak for anybody else here. I have some real concerns over, uh, the enrollment drop. It seems that your staffing in the classroom, uh, is almost in line with enrollment drop. So it would seem that the increase in spending, and I don't want to analyze your budget, I don't want to manage your budget, but would either be in programs or administrators. Um, so I think, um, speaking for the taxpayers, we have to have a long, hard look. And, and this is a significant increase in expenses at a time when you have a tremendous enrollment drop. Just an observation from me, and again, um, speak, you know, we have to look out for the taxpayers. We value the education that you, that you give, uh, you people put together to give our children, but, um, we have to look at this fiscally.
And Kristin, I, um, I have eleven siblings and they've all been through the, uh, the South Kingston School Department and the school system, uh, myself included. And my kids will also go to the same elementary school that I did, where my first grade teacher is still teaching. So I can appreciate the ups and downs of our school department and what we've gone through. And I think that, I'm not exaggerating when I say we have some of the best teachers, um, in the state here in South Kingston. Um, I don't think that declining enrollment falls solely on the shoulders of the school department. I don't think that's your burden to bear alone. I think that when we look at declining enrollment, we should look at the community as a whole and what can we do to attract families to live here, uh, to work here, to spend money here. Um, so I don't necessarily attribute that responsibility to just you. But what I hear from people, and it sounds like what you got from some of your data and then polling parents, is affordability is the biggest concern. And so even if I said to Steve, you know, "Cut the municipal budget by twenty percent," it would be a blip on our budget compared to how much the school department takes up. So, you know, we always seem to come back to like, "Oh, well, this is where the savings is" or where we, we're going to demand savings or where we look for it. And it's not necessarily because it's, we blame somebody for the declining enrollment or we expect that it's, it's your sole responsibility. But we do have a responsibility to the residents and people that say that they can't afford to live here. And this is where I start because, I mean, it is a big jump. And like you said, you don't have any new programs here. Um, and frankly, if you did, I'd be much more apt to be like, "Oh, okay, I, I see this." But, um, I just hear from people over and over again about affordability. And I want my kids to be able to stay here like I did and, and live here. And, um, I think it's going to be some difficult choices, but I hope that we can have a dialogue, a healthy dialogue, and look at where we can save the most money.
Unfortunately, am I so right?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, when you speak of programs, uh, our programs are academic. So when you speak of programs, my mind goes to, "We can't get rid of math, we can't get rid of science." We're, I mean, we could get rid of the football program and all of the sports. That wouldn't get, get you a lot of money and it would certainly, um, bring down, you know, people's ability to want to go here.
Oh, absolutely.
But it's, so programs is, is sort of, um, difficult for me to understand in terms of, we don't have, um, we have academic programs. And so, um, yes, we want to stay competitive and I absolutely, I'm a taxpayer, so I absolutely understand that balance that you have and only you have to be able to, to balance the needs of the taxpayer, um, with the needs of the families.
Right, and I mean, it's easy for us to sit up here, we can't tell you how to do your budget or how to spend the money. And it's easy to say, "Oh, well, you know, we don't want to cut." Obviously, I don't want to cut any sports programs or, you know, things that are not going to be really huge cost savings to us and quite frankly are, are popular and would cause a lot of uproar. But I think Joe mentioned and, and we've seen, um, data in previous years that the administrative costs go up. So is there room for improvement there, you know?
It will, it will, the cuts will largely, if not all, come out of salary and benefits. And we're every year, um, looking in that area. It's a, it's a terrible place to be.
Right.
It's the only area we have, it's a big area, as the manager alluded to. It's, it's a, it's a majority of your budget, it's a majority of our budget. And so that's, that's where we end up going to.
Right.
And believe me, that we, Mary Ann and I have been on the road, we've been into every school, sometimes three, four nights a week, um, trying to find other solutions. And there have been some creative solutions proposed that we'll certainly bring to the school committee. But if, if there's a giant cut, it's going to be salary and benefit. There isn't any of that.
Right.
Um, and so that's just a fact. And it will be, it will be felt throughout as all of us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have, the teacher assistant bargaining has been the hardest.
Right.
Um, but when we look at proportionally, last year we cut an assistant principal at a high school. Um, we're certainly looking into those areas again, we do every year, we're looking everywhere. Last year, we, I think, um, held off. Off on the custodial, um, group, but that might be another group that we unfortunately will need to go into. And, and our schools aren't as clean, and so it's, it's difficult. Um, but, but rest assured that we understand the balance and that we have, have sought out, um, opinion from every family member and every teacher and support staff member that was willing to meet with, um, Mary Ann and I, and there were many. I mean, they came, came out in droves and we had great conversation. Um, and I think they understand the balance as well. Um, they want both, who, who wouldn't? They want an affordable, uh, wonderful place to live and they want a wonderful school department. And, you know, we'll certainly try our best to work with you to get that.
Do you have a plan for, if this declining enrollment continues at the rate that it is, say, in five years? Um, do we have any long-term plans, like what are we going to do if we get to that point? Because I've seen other districts struggle with, you know, not looking ahead and planning. And you get to a point where they're like, "Oh, man, you know, what if we have to close a school or what do we have to do that?", which I'm not suggesting. But I just wasn't sure if because of these projections, I mean, a hundred and forty-two students is significant from what it was last year. What if it's a hundred and forty-two again next year?
So we, um, we did a NESDEC study, um, in terms of, um, taking a look at all of schools and what would be the best way to, um, go forward with the school department. Um, that, uh, created, uh, extreme controversy, I would say, in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven because the NESDEC, uh, report, um, urged us to move the preschoolers out of the Hazard Building because they were a most medically fragile, non-handulatory, um, population on the second floor of a high school campus. Uh, that was tricky, we rectified that. Um, they brought recommendations for the ITA program, um, the Wonderful Model Program, um, for special needs students, which are then preschool agents related to twenty-one, um, on URI campus that we followed. Um, they brought recommendations for alternative preschool programs that just didn't exist here before, um, that were, that did exist in other districts. And they brought forward the recommendation that at that time, you could close an elementary school. And so that hasn't changed.
Okay.
You can still close an elementary school, it's not the will of the community. It's not something you're going to be recommending, right? Um, but that plan still does exist.
Okay.
Um, last year, if you recall, um, I think it was, uh, Councilwoman Burclough asked for, I mean, Representative Matthews, who said, "You know, when it was first born, I walked into the room."
Right, I remember that.
Um, and so that's, that's not something that could happen in your future. And if that was something that the council was directing the school committee to do, would you come up with another plan for our proposal, to attract, you know, all of those programs? And, um, so right now, the plan we rely on would be the NESDEC plan, unless something else was suggested.
And what year was that last?
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, okay. And does that get redone every so often or?
It was a cost of quite a bit of money to redo it.
Okay.
And so, um, it was done, and quite frankly, the, you know, what I would caution, what I have caution to me on the past is, um, try not to spend money to get an answer that you already know and won't do.
Right.
So that doesn't make sense, uh, to hold. Um, be sure if, if we're going to commission another study specifically, what is the study looking for? Is it going to be what plan, what reconfiguration saves the most money?
Because that might not be the best educational plan. Is it going to be, when could we close Curtis Corner and what should we do with the athletic fields? That could be an entirely different plan that would quite frankly be a burden on our teaching staff, our middle-level teaching staff, in terms of their certification, that if that were going to happen, I would like to give them as much advanced notice as possible so that they could get qualified in other areas if possible. And the other is, you know, what's the best educational programming for our town? We haven't looked at that yet and that's going to cost more. But we could have a high school that looks like North Kingstown High School. We could have, you know, a campus where children who are eligible to be in elementary school but take middle school courses could seek those courses right on the same campus. And middle school children who could seek high school courses to seek that on a mega campus. So, the school committee has certainly received a lot of professional development in what that kind of programming could look like. And it's jaw-dropping. It's something that will bring people here, but it's going to cost a lot of money. But that, you know.
And just to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we close a school. I just, yeah.
I think you were.
I was just looking at our long-term, yeah.
For the viewing audience.
I'm going to wear a T-shirt that says that, but I just was curious what the plan was and long-term goals. Thank you. Didn't need to monopolize all the questions here.
I just had a quick question. In regards to the poverty rate by school spreadsheet that you had, my biggest concern is when I look at the elementary schools as a whole, town-wide, I come up with about 19.5%. My concern is that once they get to Broad Rock Middle School, in Curtis Corner Middle School, in the high school, those rates aren't really reflected. Is that because kids are more apt to not want to do free lunch? And I'm only asking that question because of the fact that the numbers are based off of the free lunch program.
So, I'd say a couple of things happened. When I was a teacher, students would have to bring the form in to declare free and reduced lunch and they got in a separate line. And it was really quite embarrassing for some students and they're personal, they were personally identifiable. I would say that was a big deterrent. Now, it is not declared, so students would not be able to know if they were entering in a pin number because their parents put a charge card behind or they're using their free and reduced lunch card. That's a wonderful point of sale piece. I would say that we do believe that there's still a little bit of a stigma in terms of children asking to be considered for free and reduced lunch. Our school social workers and teachers and guidance counselors try to help with that. Maureen and Chadley certainly tries to help with that. But I believe that a piece of that does still exist. I also think, you know, little kids might take their lunch, by lunch more than big kids do. And so, that might be a piece of, of impact. But remember, it's, you know, I thought you were going to say, I'm trying to add this up, but it makes sense to do it based on our own population. So, you know, between the 200 students and 10% of those students are on free and reduced lunch. And so, there is a little bit of variation, but typically, Broad Rock has been one of our biggest progress. So, it is interesting.
Thank you.
I have one more question, sorry. Last year, you talked about the transportation costs and how they really, we saw this kind of significant jump over a few years and you were going to survey the parents to see if any parents wanted to opt out of their seat on the bus, potentially save us some money. I'm just wondering what the status of that is.
So, we did that and the legal firm had to take a look at the opt-out letter to make certain that we were not denying students with special needs the opportunity or somewhat encouraging them to not take transportation. And so, it was a little trickier than we planned and the letter was not as friendly as we would have loved. It was very legally. That's the feedback we've gotten, so we're going to give another go at the letter. We had lots of people opt out, but mostly at the middle and high school level. We're in a two-tier busing system, so if the elementary people don't opt out too, then we still have to run a bus. We also did it for our private school students that we are obligated to transport and they were very good about filling out the forms as well, so we're appreciative of their support. We got some feedback from the parent meetings that we attended that we should, you know, maybe offer an incentive, like a $50 gift card. And I'm like, yeah, I don't know if we can actually pay parents to not take the bus, but that was a very cool idea. We got some other feedback that said, maybe you can give them incentives back to their classroom. And that's something that we're processing now. You know, what's in it for me, other than my property taxes might go down, is some of the feedback that we got from parents. Other public school committee meeting wasn't enough to save a bus. However, one of the things that Mary Ann is preparing that will hopefully be ready for January is feedback we received from almost every school was parents saying, we are a walkable community in terms of their preference, not their sidewalks. And so, maybe we can walk a little more, maybe you can fill those buses a little more, and what kind of a savings will that give us? Is it possible to have a cost savings? So, Mary Ann has already launched a study to take a look at that. That was mentioned at every school, transportation.
Thank you. I just have a question. I'm probably not reading this quickly, but I'm looking at students with special needs and I know that we had a larger amount, if you will, or percentage of students several years back with special needs. Do you see the trend going back up to have, that we will be having students enrolled with special needs or?
So, we don't really have a forecast for that. We do know that, you know, we do a great job with educating students with special needs because a lot of the parents tell us that, you know, their physicians have asked them, why don't you move to South Kingstown? They're, you know, the baby nursery has said, South Kingstown's a really nice place to live. And so, it tended to be a higher rate than I had known in the other two communities that I came from. I think that the credit goes to our special education teachers in terms of exiting students, but we have no forecast mechanism that I know of. I can certainly look into that to see. We know in terms of early intervention services, early intervening services, and then we know in terms of our preschool data, our preschool is a special education preschool that also supports community students and our numbers there are down by about 18 students. So, if that's any indication, then I would say that we're decreasing in all areas. But I can ask if there's a forecast mechanism.
I guess I was looking at it this way. I know our funding formula is certainly based on the enrollment, absolutely. But if we have a higher percentage than some, I know certainly not in the larger school communities and cities, if you will, but if we have a large enrollment of special needs, is there any other funding that we could get because of that?
So, the funding formula for special education students in Rhode Island is not a weighted formula. That was something that was discussed and actually, I was there when the manager testified on the funding formula. There is a very small categorization for students that have significant special needs to which we have a very, very small percentage of students and Mary Ann is floating me numbers here. So, $118,000 we receive in the high-cost education, special education category. And then, there are other, I mean, Providence receives 1.2 million, Portsmouth 240,000, trying to see some of our similar districts. Richmond, it says nothing. Compass, nothing. And so, it is a categorical piece, but it's a very, very particular classification of students who are taking the alternate assessment and have needs beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you should, can you turn your microphone on?
Okay. So, you know, we did have, just a few years ago, a population of 18%. And these measurements are again, not necessarily objective because they're determined by special education administrators. And so, it sort of depends on whether or not a parent can really present the information about their student's ability in such a way that, you know, they're qualifying for special education services. So, you know, we did have 18%. We had a higher population. And just as a community member, I know this, right after we were looking at closing a school, decided not to close Wakeville Elementary School, the percentage of students qualifying for special education services, if there are expenses, really linearly dropped from 18 to 16 to 14 to 12. So, whether or not it goes up is, I think, has a lot to do with the parents who are reacting, being successful over there. So, you have a question?
It's the SK High School District Report Card.
So, you're looking at the RIDE Report Card. So, if you'd like me to, if you'd like, you'd like me to delve more into comparison data on the high school report, I can certainly send those to you. They're also available on the RIDE website. One of the big concerns about the high school park data is that our students didn't take it very seriously. We're sure of that. IT directors and IT staff and teachers are saying kids handed back their laptops after just a few minutes. And so, there wasn't a built-in incentive for them, different than the SATs. So, we're hoping with this year's information that children will take them more seriously. So, it's sort of hard to pin down, you know, exactly what went wrong on one test where parents did, you know, make a choice to opt out and some did, certainly, and other students didn't take it as seriously. I would say that the, when you're looking at the elementary data, I would say most elementary children did their best, tried their best, and that the scores are more in line with the other data that we have on them, the personal literacy plan data, the STAR data, the PMP data. But I can absolutely get you, would you like to look it up on your own or would you like me to send them to you?
If you could send me a link.
Sure, sure. There isn't, I can send you a link, but there's also individual report cards, so I'll do that. Through the manager.
Beyond, you know, those questions, it seems like we're going to really need to try and figure out some ways to come up with a new revenue stream, you know, with continuing funding cuts as we're seeing. And I'm wondering if there's a model out there, as you said, you've been looking at other school systems, are there public school districts that have, that build up endowments to fund their schools? Would that be up to our trustees of the schools? Could they develop a really aggressive donor fundraising scheme, anything, something like that?
So, when you speak of trustees, I think you speak of SKEF. And so, I will say that early in my, that we had very aggressive fundraising campaigns that you'd see similar to a public college. And that some of them were based on fundraising events, which we certainly had, you know, art events and, you know, winter balls and whatnot that citizens from South Kingstown came to and donated generously. Lately, my understanding of the contributions that SKEF has been able to bring are largely small teacher grants, which are, we welcome and are thrilled for, but they're not of the magnitude that I think they originally had hoped. I remember SKEF bringing in Terry Lynch, our athletic director, and Doug, pre-one-to-one to talk about what they could do to have families, if you will, donate laptops. And it would say, in the name of the Collins family, on the child laptop that they received. And that fizzled. And I think it fizzled because, just like with any parent-run organization, there are only so many parents and they work really hard, but they're few and it's a big, big deal. You almost need, if you will. So, we've not, we've not received that level of support, but it was talked about. I mean, I had Terry, Terry was coming up with, what is it, the turf field? He wanted a turf field. And I said, this might not work out for you, be careful. But, you know, that's the only time I've heard it mentioned.
Could you briefly go over some creative but not popular ways of cost savings, just so we can kind of get an idea of what possible ways, if we had to, to save some money, we can go about, at least start thinking about that at this point?
So, you're talking about in the past or what we do this year?
I think you mentioned that some people have come to you with some creative ways, correct?
So, one of the pieces was transportation. At some of the parent forums, we had tradesmen and women who said, look, I'm an electrician, you employ an electrician and a plumber and a HVAC person and maintenance staff, have you thought about it in another way? Have you thought about, like, joining with other regional communities? Have you thought about, you know, paying for fee? Like, when you have a plumbing situation, you'd be the first call to said plumber that you go out to bid for. And so, at several school forums, that came up out loud in deference to our labor partners. That needs to be a conversation between the school committee and the labor organizations. But some of them had to do with our substitute line item. We spend between 700 and 880,000 in substitutes. Certainly, our professional staff are permitted to be ill and grieve and have professional time, but teachers don't want to be out of classrooms and a lot of training happens during the day because we don't have professional development days. And so, parents have brought up, parents who are teachers in other districts have brought up creative thinking points for the school committee to consider in terms of how professional development may be able to be offered that is not pulling teachers out of the classroom and getting a sub. But again, that would need to be negotiated. Some people have talked about, like, what would happen if we closed a school? What would it look like? How much would you save? Which school would it be? Would it be my school? That's come up. There's some fear, there's some worry in some of the elementary schools that, as Mrs. Bud Hill alluded to, like, what's going to be the day that that's going to happen here? We, they've talked about, other than, I'm drawing a blank because I didn't prepare to, this isn't the meeting, we usually talk about that, but I've said to them, mostly it's going to be salaries and benefits. And regrettably, no one wants that, but there aren't a lot of other areas. They've definitely said, you know, what's important to me? Because I've asked them, what would you cut? And what are the things that are precious? And their neighborhood schools are precious to them. Teacher assistant support primarily at the elementary school is precious to them. They have talked about the fact that having a principal in every school is important. And in some other school communities, they might share a principal, but that's precious to them. They've talked about programs and they've talked about lower class sizes. And so, the, you know, the conversation's mostly about creativity, I would say, centered around transportation and substitutes and around what can you do to do more in shared services? Mary Ann shared that we honor master price agreements for purchasing, that we work with the town in terms of our maintenance of our grounds, that we have an energy genius. Now, Mr. Carey will never let me live that down, but I'm just going to say it out loud and he brings our energy rates down very low. We certainly honored the town's agreement to move into solar energy. We hope to see those, you know, financial, environmental, and global gains going forward. But, I mean, we've cut a lot in the last eight years and it's, it's getting trickier every year. And I understand our enrollment is going down, but it doesn't go down in nice little buckets, you know, so it doesn't all go down in one area. We've been asked, what teachers, what staff would you cut? We have 18 students down at the preschool. We could cut a preschool section, which would mean a preschool teacher and a teacher assistant. We're down to 950 at the high school. So, we will, we have class size data that we've already gathered that we, similar to what we shared with the council last year, we'd look to reductions of teachers at the high school. There aren't a lot of teacher assistants left in the district and especially at Broad Rock and Curtis Corner and the high school.
Do you know what the population will look like in our schools for the next five years?
Well, we, some of those children are being born currently. So, yes, we have NEDC production, NEDC projections. We've shared them with the school committee and we can certainly send them out to you.
Just two things. One, I just want to clarify on the enrollment, unenrollment form discussion, you know, that that's not something that really has been talked about at the school committee table. So, there was some information brought to us, I think, you know, this past spring or summer, but that's really not a form that we've looked at. So, I'm hoping that we'll be able to delve into that a bit deeper at the January meeting and maybe start to look at that issue a little deeper because, you know, maybe some of it is within our control. And then, I just, I want to kind of touch on the affordable housing. Just there's two sides of that. One is the tax side, you know, and what people pay for taxes, and that's, you know, legitimate, and of course, you look at that. And then, the other part is just, you know, the cost of the housing itself, and, you know, people, most people, majority have a mortgage payment. But it seems like the last few months with the election like that, there was a lot of talk about looking at the cost of housing itself in South Kingstown. And so, I'm hoping, and, and there's trends. You know, there's a state trend. We're in, you know, we're static population, we're an aging population, so there are things that are happening that are certainly outside of South Kingstown's control. But I'm just hoping that, you know, maybe we can start to look at that. There are a lot of fifty-five-plus developments that have happened over the last number of years, and no children. And so, if we want to look at the enrollment decline, just to, you know, look at everything.
I actually have a comment, too. So, when Deborah Gess did change the money formula in South Kingstown, ended up being one of the biggest losers. The idea was that we could rely more on our property transfer and money from our own town to run our schools. During that same time, you know, we really didn't get any, any, any support from, from the town in that area. And the school committee dealt with that by, by laying off a lot of staff. So, that was thirty-seven students that we lost that year, and we laid out, we laid off twenty-two and a half full-time equivalent positions. So, I think, you know, going forward, in, in really forty-six kids the next year and eighteen staff members, I think we have made cuts because of, you know, receiving less funding that have impacted, you know, the education that we can deliver. And I, I really don't think there's much more room for decreasing staff at this point without having a negative, more negative outcome.
Right. You asked as far as the projections. Those are the projections as far as where the current enrollment is as of September of two thousand and sixteen, and what NESDEC has indicated over the next five years. The, the reductions are going to continue based on looking at what family size is in the community, as well as just the, the basic demographics. But I think it's really important is that adding children to the school system doesn't reduce the cost of education. When you look at the current budget for the current year, the cost per pupil in South Kingstown exceeds nineteen thousand dollars. The property taxes associated on a, a per pupil basis exceeds sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. If a family comes into the community and has two children, and has a property tax requirement of over thirty-two thousand dollars, and contributes five thousand dollars as an average home, the rest of that is coming out of other pockets as well. So, it, it's not a case where you're seeing school systems advocating to try to increase. I think, from a community planning perspective, you certainly want to see a cross-section of the community, where there are families, there are older people. When we get into the capital budget, when we took, take a look in the capital budget at what the latest population figures are by category in terms of age, we see a remarkable reduction in the under fourteen-years category, and a huge increase in the over fifty-five. So, that's a change, but that, that's more of a suburban change than it is a, a change in, in every, every urban area. But, you know, cost of education in South Kingstown is one of the higher in the state. Certainly not the highest, but it certainly is higher. One of the things I'm also concerned with is that there needs to be a look at where the, where the school system's going to be from a facilities perspective over the next five to ten years. Because with an aggressive capital improvement program for outfitting and re-outfitting existing facilities, if those buildings are going to continue to be in use, then you should spend the capital dollars. If you don't, if you do spend the capital dollars and you stop using a building, just as we did with South Road, you lose the reimbursement, the thirty-five percent reimbursement. One of the first issues that the school department needs to deal with is the fact that some of the initial capital improvements that are planned over the next few years are dealing with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on parking lot improvements at Curtis Corner. If Curtis Corner is something that five years from now would be taken out of the, the equation, would we be spending that type of money for parking, parking improvements? So, one of the things I've said in the capital improvement program is that when you look at the enrollment declines that have occurred, there has to be a programmatic review, not just of how you deliver education, or it's also going to be where you deliver education. City of, of Warwick has gone through some very difficult times, and those difficult times really started four years ago with a facilities analysis in conjunction with an enrollment analysis. It's not a case of what is going to occur in the seventeen, eighteen year. It's gonna be a look at what is, what's going to occur by the year, twenty twenty-one. You know, I, I've heard the arguments that, gee, we can't close Curtis Corner because we would lose the athletic field. Well, I've been here long enough to remember when there was no athletic field, and the football team played at, at All Mountain Field. So, it, it's not like, you know, it's not, it, it's not a case where, because the building isn't used as a school, that those facilities can't continue to be used. But it's going to take a planning to determine how all that works. I'm not advocating to close schools. I'm not advocating to keep them open. What I'm saying is, is that planning of a fiscal nature in conjunction with an education program is necessary hand in hand. If you're going to look for four to five million dollars in capital improvements, we've got to make sure that those dollars are being spent in the facilities that are going to be there for the next repayment period on the bonds that we put out. And the bonds that we use are twenty-year bonds. Now, certainly, we can't forecast that, but when we look at our buildings, we need to look at how many of the rooms are occupied for classroom purposes? How many are being used for, for, for secondary purposes? Are there joint services that can be done? Are programs that are, are system-wide being handled in one building that couldn't be accommodated at another building, such as with the reopening of South Road School? Was the pre-K program, could that have been fit in either the West Kingston empty classrooms or the Mattoonik, or in any of the other school buildings? They're not questions that I can give you answers to. That's not my research. All I'm saying is, is that I'm concerned when I see the amount of capital facilities dollars that have been incorporated into the initial proposal the school committee has, to how that, how this system's gonna look in five years, or six years. Now, at one point, when you look at enrollments, I mean, I can give you another slide here. This, this is the curve since nineteen eighty-seven of enrollments, and up through two thousand and sixteen. And it's the flow that's important, rather than the actual numbers itself. But you're going with, you know, a, I think it was a twenty-nine percent decline in the enrollment since we built Broad Rock. And if that's gonna continue with another four hundred, I think it's four hundred and twenty-five students over the next five years, what does that do to the school system in terms of its efficiency or ability to deliver the programs? Obviously, it will reduce classroom enrollment numbers if, in fact, it doesn't address the, the number of teaching staff that, that's necessary. Buildings in and by themselves have got costs to be operated. So, all of those things need to be taken into play. I certainly would want to work with the school committee as far as facilitating those improvements. But on the capital improvement program that you submitted, you've got a new five-year facilities improvement you see the system going. The enrollment numbers aren't going to change considerably from, from the curve that you're seeing here. So, you've got to come up with an idea as to what you want to do with it. I understand vacant buildings generate proposals for, for, for private school uses, and that concerns many people. But at the same time, occupied buildings that are being run inefficiently also scare a lot of people. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize, I'm trying to, to give an idea of where I see the necessity for planning to go, for us to really be able to work as a community together with council and, and school committee.
All, all good points. Excuse me just a second, Jonathan. I just want to address, Alicia, I don't disagree with you on the enrollment and the staffing. So, the, the best numbers I could come up with were ten years from oh-six to two thousand and fifteen. Enrollment down twenty percent, staffing down about seventeen. Certified teachers at fifteen, non-certified at twenty-six percent drop, with a twenty percent drop, no question. We gained administrators at fourteen percent in the same period that we had a twenty percent enrollment drop. So, I don't disagree with you. Certified and non-certified teachers have taken it on the chin. There may be other savings. Yeah?
I just, I just wanted to say, my intent in bringing that up is not to be critical either. So, I'm not trying to say something to be criticized, but just that it's been brought up in years past. It was brought up, the cost of housing, so I'm not saying it's a total solution. Children do cost money to educate. The federal government doesn't seem to really put a lot of faith in that, or a lot of stock in that, and so, we're left carrying the weight. But the fact is, I think as a society, we like children, and we like to educate them. And I'm just trying to bring forward that affordable housing has been brought forward, and for planning purposes, for next year and the next five years, as the manager talks about, we should have conversations.
Just for the record, in the capital improvement program, we've recommended a hundred thousand dollars be set aside for affordable housing purposes in the seventeen, eighteen year. It's something as a policy that the council will be addressing.
I just have one comment. I appreciate the town council kind of being willing to, um, to look at closing schools with the school committees, so that it is more like a town-wide decision. It's gonna be a hard one, and I don't think it should be a common issue. Anything else? Now, the time I would suggest that we interrupt the, the next round of public, and put our thoughts on the schools.
Jim O'Neill, Mattoonik. Appreciate all the hard work that I heard this evening, and that I've seen over the years when I was involved with the council, and before that, when I was involved as a citizen. Much has been said tonight, and I'll say it again, as I've said every year for the last seven years. School populations in the state of Rhode Island continue to retreat. You heard tonight about Warwick. Warwick matches us at thirty percent over the last, oh, gosh, what, ten, twelve, fifteen years? And they're going through closings and consolidations. Providence is doing it, other cities and towns. The only place not doing it is South Kingstown. You owe it to the taxpayers to have a conversation. You heard it from Steve, and many of you have talked about it. It's got to be a plan between, between what you need for the education that the students require, and affordability of your citizens on the tax basis. You have to do it. I've read to you all every year for the last six years, I have it right in front of me here, Dr. Robert Hicks, back in oh-eight, oh-nine, gave it one more year before he would close Curtis Corner School. February tenth, two thousand and nine, you could read the articles in the newspaper. One more year. The population at that time was thirty-six hundred kids. We're five hundred fewer. And everyone's using recent examples. Best example to use for population and FTEs is two thousand, two thousand and one. We had forty-three hundred eighty-three children in our school system, no pre-K then. We had five hundred nineteen FTEs. We're roughly four hundred eighty-eight FTEs today, four eighty-nine, down about thirty. We're down thirteen hundred students. That's forty-two, forty-three per person, if you want to add it up that way. Anyway, Dr. Hicks thought, on a maintenance and transportation purposes, we could save six, seven hundred thousand dollars. You heard tonight, Ms. Strength fellow said, obviously, its benefits and salaries are the largest by far, there's nothing close to it. But if you could show the citizens that at least you're having a conversation about the transportation and closing a school, but this had to come up tonight at the end of this meeting. Dr. Mega, past president of the school committee, three years ago, got the quotes right here. "We are over-facilitated." A lot of that money can go to students. Here we are, year after year after year, this continues. I agree, and I've said year after year, state aid is killing us. Ten and a half million, seven years ago, when they started the education funding formula, and now what? We're closing in on seven million, if not, a little, little below that. But the double whammy, which no one's talking about here, which I've brought up the last few years, we've had almost a hundred and fifty million dollars of new education money by the governor's budgets the last four years. We have not gotten a penny. Take away one side, it'd take away all our taxpayer money that goes in their personal income, sales taxes, gambling, you name it. Not a penny comes back to us. That's where the fight should be, where the general assembly members, they ought to be here. We ought to be just, you know, ready to hang and quarter some of them, but, but it's not their fault. It's a state that is, has been very, very poor, which is hopefully coming out of recession with a, with a real uptick. But there's some things that you really have to be aware about, because as Steve says to you, you've got to look out four or five years. Steve brought up tonight, the five-year plan by the general assembly to eliminate the car tax. Well, that's great. Providence is at sixty, Creighton, Patuckets are in the forties and fifties, and Narigans at Charlestown and here are in the middle teens. Well, guess what that's going to mean when you add it all up? How do we find an average there? Obviously, we're gonna be the ones that suffer here. The issues you really should be concerned about, and I hope, boy, I, you know, I hate to talk about Donald Trump in this stock rally, but boy, the state pension outflow continues at three to four hundred million dollars a year. There's talk by the state treasurer to reduce the assumed rate from, from seven and a half percent to six and a half percent. You're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. Now, we're maybe two point eight to three percent of that dollar amount, but just all of a sudden start thinking about this. The average performance of that fund has been around Providence. As Providence goes, so goes the state of Rhode Island. Providence is where the middle teens unfunded pension and their healthcare plans. They currently have an eight percent assumed rate. Eight, something that, this is where the conversations should be. Money is gonna be very, very important here. I would like to see the council charge the school committee. I want to close Curtis Corner. I think you heard Steve correctly. The sports programs are not gonna be affected, that they can be handled quite well. Dr. Hicks, I would like to think he was right with the six to seven hundred thousand dollars savings, but you can't tell me, if you take away the transfers of transportation, and I don't know when the contract expires, but you can't tell me that we can't save a half billion dollars or more on that. Wouldn't the taxpayers love to see that, if that's where you close down the expenses? And maybe less maintenance with the school being closed? You have to consider that option. At least show us that you're talking about it. Every year, this is happening. And by the way, NESDEC has been phenomenal. Nesbed, NESDEC has been right on the money. I think Maureen has been here as long as I have with those NESDEC numbers, and they have been extremely accurate. And I know Ms. Strength fellow's comments in the paper, the one she was most worried about, I think, was the preschool that dropped, I can't remember what the number was, eighteen, twenty kids. Boy, start measuring that over the next seventeen or eighteen years. This is really serious. Jonathan and I are both in the real estate business. Most of the new business I've been doing have been sales to retirees, investors, some are people looking from New York, New Jersey, Connecticut. This is just the way it is. Narigans at North Kingstown, South Kingstown, Charlestown, Wesley, we're very attractive for that. So, that's not gonna change. We're not gonna have a population boost going back up thousands of kids, just because that's where most of our real estate's being sold. We're, we're just a very attractive community. You know, we can't help ourselves. We're, we're just a very attractive community, and we can't help ourselves. What we need to do is also what I want the council to do, if you cannot close that school, then you've got to somehow or another work your budget down to a zero increase over last year. You cannot show the population that we've lost, what, a hundred forty kids times nineteen thousand five hundred, two point six million, if you use nineteen thousand five hundred, if you just use a ten or eleven thousand dollar figure, it's a million four. You can't ask for a dollar more without that conversation, that's what you must do. And lastly, shared services, you know, everyone talks about them, but why not? We're going to have to, maybe we need another school psychiatrist, psychologist, this and that. Why can't Narragansett, North Kingstown, Charlestown, Wesley, and South Kingstown, why can't we have that person, or those two people, once a week? Why can't we share it with other communities? And even a bigger conversation down the road. If we continue to lose students, and Narragansett does too, maybe you need a conversation about the high schools. Maybe we need some kind of merger of some sorts. You're going to have to, because if we don't have it, have this conversation, and property tax, uh, taxes keep going up, maybe the ride will decide there's going to be one price per student for every city and town in the state, and that's what none of us want, who have moved to this city. None of us want to see that. And then lastly, why it's important for the taxpayers. My, my tax bill this year in South Kingstown, fifteen dollars and nine cents per thousand, ninety cents for the fire department, sixteen dollars, just use a round number, sixteen dollars. Narragansett, ten dollars and eight cents with their fire department, Charlestown, ten dollars and eighty-one cents with their fire department. We're fifty, fifty-five percent higher than our neighboring towns. That is shocking. So, we're, we're missing something here, and even if you take out an extra million dollars for the charter students, a couple million dollars because of our huge geography of this town, we are still three and a half to four thousand dollars higher than the North Kingstown, the Cumberland's, the Barrington's, the best school systems in the state. That's ten, twelve, fifteen million dollars more than all those communities. You need to explain that to our taxpayers. And hopefully you've all, and I'm not going to read it to you, hopefully you all have the October sixteenth edition from the Providence Journal, and I'm sure you'll pull it out here at some point this evening, why Massachusetts schools are better. So, I didn't see anybody talking about it tonight, but it's very important, because all the measures they used with four different cities and towns in Massachusetts, and four comparables in Rhode Island, they said, "It is not the demographics, and it's not the money." Thank you very much.
Anybody else interested in coming up to the podium?
Hi, thank you. Yes, it's Brooke Conley. I just wanted to say that I hope that the town council will, you know, assent to give the committee, uh, school committee what they're asking for, but I do hope that, should any cuts need to be made, that they won't be made to teacher salaries, to teachers, to TAs, to special education, because this is what I'm hearing from parents, that they're concerned, this is already being cut. And I've heard a lot of rates being talked about, I'd like to talk about the poverty rate, and how that's been increasing, and because of that, kids are coming to school with a lot more needs. Food, shelter, all that's insecure, and when you send a kid to school like that, it's, it's hard to take care of him, and it, it is. And we need to be increasing our social workers, our guidance counselors, and not increasing our administration and our disciplinarian staff. I would also, the, the idea of closing Curtis Corner seems like a good one to me, as a, as a parent. I wouldn't want to see an elementary school closed. And I also could see cutting down on transit, it's a little bit of a concern to me that Ocean State Transit sponsors the superintendents association, that our superintendent is the vice principal, president of, and she just got an award from that association. It's sponsored by Ocean State Transit and Renaissance Learning, and we're spending a lot on transportation and proprietary technologies. So, just wanted to, you know, mention that. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Roland Benjamin, live up the hill in Wakefield. I want to just kind of echo some of the concerns that were already mentioned by a couple council members, by, by Steve Alfred, by Mr. O'Neill. The taxpayers are often kind of missed in a lot of these conversations. We, there's some big numbers that I just want, want, that everyone should know, I think they do. I know, I've heard Steve mention them in the past, but three out of four dollars of our, our taxes go to the schools, but three out of four taxpayers don't have a kid in the school system. So, this is, this is kind of an seventy-five, twenty-five thing. There's, there's already some disparity. Now, do we want to invest in the schools? Of course we do. I've run for school committee, I've, I've talked about all these same issues, these are very important issues. But we can never lose fat, lose sight of the fact that there is this pressure from, from taxpayers. And we, we talked about this in one of the open house, early budget meetings with, with the superintendent and the, and the, and the schools, I, I did. We talk about the, it's almost this conversation that, that Mr. O'Neill referenced. We need to have a very, very, very accurate, precise, and, and, and driven budget before we can start talking about zeros, twos, four percents, whatever they are. The, the idea that we can have where a maintenance of effort type of discussion would mean dropping four percent in, in, in the tax levy, that's the floor. You know, legally, the, the ceiling is four percent, we never talk about the floor that's even legally allowed. We only talk about zero being, zero is catastrophic, and then one, two, three, and four are slightly less catastrophic. Now, what does that do? That creates these kind of conversations in November, December, January, where we start talking about closing the school. And then we spend six months talking about closing schools, and cutting sports, and cutting music, and cut this, cut this, cut this. And now, we don't have any real discussions on, on, on program policies and that kind of thing in the schools. I, I really think it, there, there is, I run a business, you, most of you know that, but there's, there's fifty-five people there, we do a tenth of what the town does in revenue, six, seven, eight million dollars, dollars a year, but our revenue goes plus or minus thirty percent. I know, at, at least one of you can attest to having a business, trying to run a business with that kind of revenue volatility. We're talking about zeros and ones, I'm not talking about thirty and forty percent, you can achieve the same goals of excellence that you want out of the school department, out of the town, or whatever, and still have these fluctuations of plus or minus two percent. But we never even have the minus conversation, and I just want, I want to say that there is a lot of, it, it's something that I think about every day. I've gone through, in my business, that I, in the last twelve years, some major structural changes as a result of thirty and forty percent revenue swings. These are things that I, these are kind of conversations, I, I've been coming to these meetings now for almost ten years, I've, I've, I've almost never seen them, that kind of magnitude, you know? That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Adrian Daley, and I have a student who's a first grader at Peacedale. I grew up in Virginia, a public school student from Virginia. I also spent time in New Orleans, I've gotten to see public schools in those different areas, and living in New Orleans and seeing the public school system there, this schools, the schools here are incredible. The public schools that we have in South Kingstown are really good, and I've seen what happens when you don't invest in your public schools. I've seen how the communities suffer, how they can fall apart, how the gaps between the haves and the have-nots increase, and it causes problems for the communities. I've also seen the quality of the programs that y'all have here in South Kingstown. I went to a pretty good school in Virginia, it's a public school, I'm proud of it, got a lot of good stuff out of it. The schools here are amazing. My daughter started the dual-language program, that's incredible. The fact that the music programs that you guys have had, the different things that you're doing, the conversations that you're having about special needs, this is amazing, and y'all should be really proud of it. And I've been hearing some discussions about, you know, well, the taxpayers this, taxpayers that, you know, we need to look out for the taxpayers. If you don't invest in your schools, it affects the whole community. You want people to have good community, you need to make sure that the kids are getting a good education. It affects everybody, not just those who are, have kids in the school system, it affects the whole community. And I know y'all have a lot of really difficult decisions, decisions to make with how we're going to spend money, there's, it's tight, you're not getting a lot of outside assistance, you have to make some really hard decisions. But I really, really encourage you to think about not just the numbers, not just the amount of money that you're putting into that, but what is the return on investment? What is it going to be worth to invest in our students, and for our community? Thank you.
Any other further comments, anybody else would like to come up to the podium?
Just quickly, I want to address the Curtis Corner thing, because Kristin, maybe for those of you who weren't here last year, went through in great detail the closure of Curtis Corner. But if that's the directive, and it is, it's nice to hear that we can have a collaboration with this conversation, because that's not what it's been in the past. In the past, it's been, you know, school committee superintendent, come up with closing a school, and tell us how you're going to do it, and take every bit of heat from the community for, for what's done. So, if we can work together, and if the directive is, when can you close Curtis Corner? We're all willing to, to have that conversation, it's not that we're unwilling to have that conversation. I think what we're unwilling to do, or what I'm unwilling to do, is to have another study that tells us to close a neighborhood elementary school, and then not follow through on doing it. I just think that's not truthful to the community, and that's, that's not where we want to go. So...
I am not advocating for closing Curtis Corner or any other school. I'm saying that what you need to do is to determine where do you want to be, and where do you need to be over the, over the long term. You've got far too many students in the grade levels that you have now to consider that type of a close, but you've got the NESDEC numbers that will give you a better indication as to where you are going to go, and also where you're going to have district-wide programming. And I'm saying, you need to take a look at that before you spend a lot of money.
I think that it's important that we do it together, that's, that's how I feel.
I, I'm sorry, I agree with you whole, wholeheartedly, and I guess what we're saying is that I think we need to took, take a look long-term, if it's five years, ten years down the road. I don't think we want to end up in a situation where we look back and say, you know, we should have done this, we should have done that. Saving money is very difficult, making hard decisions is very difficult as well, and you're right, that it has to be something that's done in conjunction with the school committee and the council. I don't think the council can just say, hey, cut this, cut that. We're all citizens of this town, we're all looking towards the future, and we want our community to strive, and we also want our kids in our school systems to get the best possible education.
And not to beat a dead horse here, but if you're looking at that chart right there in front of us, we're basically at the school population we were back in nineteen...
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, when we were functioning with one less middle school. So, if there's, there must be a way to study the problem and come back with the result that we have one less middle school, and that would be Curtis Corner, given the conversation that we've been having. I mean, just looking, you can even see by the cohorts, it's basically the same. But that, I mean, that's a really a discussion for another time, and I think we'll get to it. Just to give context to a couple of the other comments we heard, you know, I think it's, it's sort of comparing apples and oranges in a couple cases. First of all, between a business and between a municipal government, or any form of government is, is inaccurate, the, you know, the requirements for services from governments remain the same, or even increase during harder times. Certainly, we're not going to pick up some of the roads and not have to service them, or, or do any of these other services that we provide. Also, comparing us and our tax, as, or tax rates to our surrounding communities is, is disingenuous. I think Steve goes to great length to try and point this out every year, but if you go to slide fifteen on this presentation that everybody has access to, South Kingstown is paying six hundred dollars less than the next lowest per capita tax levy, which is North Kingstown at twenty-seven hundred thirty-eight dollars, we're at twenty-one hundred sixty-six. So, you know, we do a pretty good job here in SK, I just think that should be noted.
Can I just briefly respond to something that Abel said? I mean, I agree with you, the numbers of children that we have from nineteen eighty-seven are clearly about the same. I taught in nineteen eighty-eight, I can tell you significantly there have been changes in terms of certification, room size, special education programming. We did not have OTPT teachers in nineteen eighty-eight, never mind rooms, and therapy rooms, and school-based therapies, the requirements for space and size and staffing for medically fragile students that we have now, even in terms of the station fire creating platforms of egress for very young children that can't be on the second floor or in the basement have changed. To give a, just a brief example, Wakefield School, that center room that long ago was a kindergarten, is too small to be considered a kindergarten now. And so, although it makes logical sense that you could retrofit, you know, from nineteen eighty-seven, a lot has changed since nineteen eighty-seven that don't make it as simple as it appears. I'm not saying that you think it's simple, I know we've had discussions about this, but for the greater public, it's not that simple.
speak to anybody on the council. The state mandates the maximum at four percent, we've held the line pretty steadily, we had our biggest increase last year, which was slightly over two percent. But I, 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 my children went through the SK school system, and they got a wonderful, wonderful education. I don't want to deny another child the same opportunity. So, I think we have to find good ways to work together to really manage this budget, so we can work things out for everybody, because, you know, you're talking on one end about having affordable housing, but on the other end, a four percent increase to property taxes is a lot to an aging population in town, too. So, I'm, I'm trying to be cognizant of trying to really weigh, and I'm speaking for myself, to really weigh the, you know, the pros and cons and the benefits, and I won't deny any child a good education. situation is the cost of benefits and insurances are really what take your budget, really put through the hardest. A 7% increase in just your healthcare benefits, that's tough enough to take, I mean, that's going to cost some money. So I think you can't deny people a living wage, I mean, the teachers have been bullet past. I know I have to earn a living, and everybody that is sitting here has to earn a living as well. We just have to find a practical way to make this work. It's not an if this or that, cut this, close a school. We need to be more constructive in the way we tackle these budgets, and I think if collectively we all work together, we can accomplish some good things without saying we have to cut music or sports or close a school. We have to just look and see what we can do to make it equitable, and also to protect the interest particularly of our older taxpayers, but that, I think that really, but you made a very good point, that everybody loses if we don't invest in our children, it's a community effort, so we just need to, we just need to look at that, and we need to work together.
Is this? Oh, of course, yes. No.
Any further discussion? Any other comments? So you know, everybody is done with the conversation, I mean, I don't think we are much mature to be able to...
Is this a clarification, am I building a budget around what number? Because...
Who do you want to ask? Because I think we have different answers.
Any human being that's willing to answer me. Typically, we leave with direction. Typically, you give us direction and say, Kristin and Mary Ann, you're building this budget around, and you've come to some sort of solution. If you could just be really clear with what that is, that would be helpful.
So, so we got the bulk of this on Thursday night, we got the hard numbers when I walked in the door tonight. I can't give you an answer tonight.
What, what, please, is the hard numbers?
Well, the actual budget, I mean, your actual pro forma.
So our pro forma we sent to you last week at your request.
All right, so, all right, so this was... It ended to me tonight, and it may have been on the website, and I didn't, maybe I didn't open everything. So I'm not prepared to give you an answer tonight, but, I mean, I don't disagree that if, if we're looking at, listen, people talk about the older population, we have young families who can't afford to stay here, and a lot of the affordability is the taxes. I'm not prepared to say that level funding you is a cut. Right, and so you're saying that the property values are good, and therefore the taxes are higher? I thought, I thought I did give you direction.
I would want to see multiple, I mean, I think Steve alluded to that, I'd want to see, you know, what does 0% look like, what does 2% look like, what, you know, I don't know. I mean, I would need to know, because I think this presentation you gave gives us so much great information about what's going on in the school, what happened last year, and that's great, but I don't know what would happen if we said, you know, we need, we can't give you the increase that you want, so I don't really know how to give you that recommendation.
And I think the five scenarios that you've given us, the only number that changes is the taxes. Nothing changes on the expense side.
With the multiple options, that would be a lot of work, I'm assuming, correct? Right, okay, so...
We want to build a budget on for the next meeting. Not your next meeting, our next meeting. So we meet again in two weeks, and that is, I have to prepare a cut list based upon a number. Every year that I've served as superintendent, these two bodies have given a number for us to work on, that you've agreed upon, so we can make up our own number. I have lots thinking about in my head, but I don't know that you want me to do that.
No, but personally, you know, in a perfect world, I'd love to give you guys exactly what you want, but when I look at it from a practical standpoint, I think that maybe we look at 0 to 1% and see what that looks like.
So what you're saying is build it at 0%, and then I can show you what, excuse me, build it at 1% and then show you what it would look like at 0? Typically, you, I understand what the manager is asking, I can comply with that. The big idea is what is the percentage, the property tax transfer that we, in the next two weeks, build, because this is the pro forma, so we have to build a budget around this, and we have to put cuts into play. So typically, you'll give us direction in terms of what is that number. You change off that number. It is not a, it is not a set in stone idea today. You haven't typically gone higher, but you do change off that number.
Yeah, so I personally would like to see, I mean, I don't know how everyone else feels, look at it at 1%, we can make changes if we need to at that point, at least we know what it's going to look like, we have a level field at that point to know where we need to maybe add money back into, or if we have to look at other ways to save money. I mean, I think you absolutely need some direction, you can't just walk away not knowing.
Correct. Thank you. I appreciate that you came up with a number, right, and that you've come up with a number, too. I'm wondering, in the conversations that you have with the voters and the taxpayers, you know, what do you think they're willing to tolerate that doesn't jeopardize us going to a referendum?
Yeah, I can only speak for myself, of course, but, I mean, my feeling was that we, this is a conversation, it is a process. I feel very comfortable that, you know, in a perfect town council's perfect world, you know, maybe it's 0. In school committee's perfect world, maybe it's 2 or 3. And I think we kind of, in my opinion, you know, we kind of know that before the meeting even started. So I'm very comfortable personally with where we're at. I would like to see the budget, you know, we are probably going to make some staffing reductions that we'd rather not make, but my own personal opinion is, I'd like to see what we think that we need, and then we bring it to you, and then we continue the conversation. Because, I mean, that's my recollection of the process. So rather than to put you on the spot or have us on the spot, you know, we have the range that we're kind of dealing with, and we'll move forward and we'll keep listening to the community members and see where the different feelings are.
And I think going with a 1% increase is showing that we do have an increase at that point. We might find that it's an unacceptable increase, meaning that we need more potentially at that point. But at least we need a starting point to see what it looks like at 1%.
And if I can't, is that all right? Or, no, you know, not being argumentative, but I mean, that's like from the town council, I mean, we're all working together, we're all the same town, we're all the same children, we're all the same taxpayers, right? But that, to me, that's like exactly the right thing to say, with coming from the town council, and I'm just going to say, coming from the school committee, just speaking for myself, you know, we may come to you with 2 or 3, because we may say, you know, we need to see this, and you may say, well, we really can't do the 2, and then we'll look at it again. So, I mean, but I think that's where the give and take is.
And I think that's fair, because we don't know what 1% is going to be in the budget, so...
But it's...
But I think it's a place to start, and then, you know, all of us not knowing exactly what the detriment or the benefit would be, it would allow us to see it, and then we could turn around and say, that can't happen, we need to look at this again, or maybe that's too much, we might not need a certain something. But we're not the school committee, that's why we entrust all of you, and that's why the people voted for you, because they want you to protect the interests as well, and that's so important. But I don't know how much of a difference 1% is going to make, truthfully, because I don't know enough about the programs or your overall budget. All I know is what we allocate to you, and then your task to spend that money as you see appropriate. We will, you know, vote for that determination, but that's, we're not the school committee, that's why you guys are elected.
I just need to make a point. I mean, at what number do we get to that we all admit that it should not cost more? Where's that number? I thought the 140 was so dramatic that we might be there, right? About 300, 300 down in enrollment in the last three years, and each year, we're sort of pleased that we kept it to a 1% to 2% increase. What's the number? Is the number 500 from now, that we finally say, you know what, it really shouldn't cost more this year? I think that's a valid question. What's the point? I don't, yeah, I don't disagree with that, but when it drops every year and there's an increase every year, you have to pick a number. Pick it three years from now if you need to, and if in three years we're down another 150 kids or 200 kids, maybe that's the number you'd be comfortable saying, all right, this year it shouldn't cost more. But, I mean, nobody's looking far enough ahead, or at least I don't think they are, to say, where's the number where we're not going to say, 1% to 2% is acceptable, yeah, let's just raise 1% to 2%. We should be picking the number. I mean, 140 is dramatic.
I think, Joe, that that disregards inflation, the cost of living adjustments, the fact that you have to renegotiate contracts with teachers, all these things are costs that increase over time, as well as the, you know, the mandated changes that, you know, Kristin went over four new positions are mandated by federal law. We can't disregard that.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't disregard them, I asked the question. What's the number? What's the point? What's the point where we say?
I think it's not yet, is what they're telling us.
Well, I know that's what they're telling us.
I think we've gotten directive for 1%, and if that's for Kristin to build her budget off, and I think we're, we could, this conversation could certainly continue for a long time, but I think if you as council are comfortable with her building a budget off of 1%, it is a process, it's going to come back to you, and 1% might look like not okay to you as a body of five, or it might look great, or, you know, we'll go from there, but this is...
It only has to look good to three.
Precisely.
Can I clarify my question to Kristin earlier? You had mentioned, and I guess I didn't understand your response to it, you were saying something about, I said 1%, and then you said, I think what you were saying, just want to clarify, that if you built a budget on 1% and then had to go to 0%, what would that look like? Is that what you were talking about, or something different?
I interpreted what you were saying as giving me a range.
I was suggesting a range only because no one else was coming up with a number.
I understand. So typically, they, you all give us a number, so you say, let's say, typically, it has been 0% in early years of employment here and 2% later. So you're saying 1%. When you said, would it be extraordinarily difficult to show us what it would look like at 1% and 0%, we're on different timelines then.
Right.
So we have one meeting in two weeks with a supposed holiday week off for Mary Ann and I that never happens, and at that meeting, we're given a significant cut list to decide based upon what we decide to do. Then I can also, my free time over the next following three weeks, come up with how it would get more ugly. I've done that, and Ella remembers that. And I have a slide that says what you are not permitted to cut, like transportation, and what you can cut. And the what you can cut list 10 years ago was very ugly, and so it will not get prettier as we go along. But to give me that 0 to 1 is tricky at this stage of the year for us. So what Alicia said is what we're typically used to, you, both groups decide on one number, we come back to you, but by the time we come back to you, it's like almost done about it.
And again, when I brought that up, it's because there were other suggestions of saying, give us five options, and I was just saying...
There's more than five options.
Right, so, start, starting at 1%, let's see what that looks like, and go from there, and we may come back and say, we can't live with 1% because we can't live without these particular services, and it might need to be increased, but at least we have a starting point.
Did I miss the meeting last year where we gave you a number?
2.5% at the meeting, I think you were there last year.
But we said to you specifically, we want you to...
Every year.
Build your budget...
Absolutely, every year.
I just don't remember us giving numbers last year.
And then at the end, it could be off a little bit, depending upon the process as it goes, but you direct us.
I guess I just, I didn't remember us giving specific numbers, picking...
First and last slide.
More info. Question, because I came in a little late, but I'm looking at what I believe was the presentation today, and I'm page 30. Talks about the pro forma fiscal year 2017, 2018 tax distribution, and as I'm looking at this, I understand that there's something here for a property tax level increase for schools, 2.03%. Am I, did I, am I understanding it correctly?
Was that in your presentation, Steve?
Steve's pro forma was based on a 2% increase.
Let me go back, this is the sheet that was put up that looked at what the property tax implications were. Now, again, let's recognize that the 62,279,000 is a pro forma number that the school department has put in, and what they're claiming is that that's the number that they would need. So if you look at that chart, this, charts aren't numbered, but this sheet here showed that the existing year, they got $51,387,000. They're saying that if they got 1% more, they'd get, well, I mean, the 1% would be $514,000. If they got 2%, it would be $1,027,000, $1,277,000 and so forth. So the real question, I think, that's being asked, and what I had said in my initial presentation was, allow them to build a budget at 2%, which was the baseline for a pro forma, which... as we go along. But to give me that 0 to 1 is, is tricky at this stage of the year. So what Alicia said is what we're typically used to, you, both groups decide on one number, we come back to you, but after, by the time we come back to you, it's like almost done at ours.
And again, when I brought that up, it's because there were other suggestions of saying, give us five options. And I was just saying...
It is more than five options.
Right, so, s, s, start, starting, starting at 1%, let's see what that looks like and go from there. And we may come back and say, we can't live with 1% because we can't live without these particular services, and it might need to be increased, but at least we have a starting point.
Did I miss the meeting last year where we gave you a number?
2.5% at the meeting, I think you were there last year.
But we said to you specifically, we want you to...
Every year.
Build your budget...
Absolutely, every year.
I just don't remember us giving numbers last year.
And then at the end, it could be off a little bit, depending upon the process as it goes, but you direct us.
I guess I just, I didn't remember us giving specific numbers, picking...
First and last slide.
Maureen?
Question, because I, I came in a little bit late, but I, I'm looking at what I believe was the presentation today, and on page 30, it talks about the pro forma, fiscal year 2017, 2018 tax distribution. And as I'm looking at this, I understand that there's something here for a property tax level increase for schools, 2.03%. Am I, did I, am I understanding it correctly?
Was that in your presentation, Steve?
I think Steve's pro forma was based on a 2% increase.
Let me go back. This is the sheet that was, was put up that looked at what the property tax implications were. Now, again, let's, let's recognize that the $62,279,000 is a pro forma number that the school department has put in. And what they're claiming is that that's the number that they would need. So if you look at that chart, this, the charts aren't numbered, but this sheet here showed that the existing year, they got $51,387,000. They're saying that if they got 1% more, they'd get, well, I mean, the 1% would be $514,000. If they got 2%, it would be $1,027,000, $1,27,000 and so forth. So the, the real question, I think, that's being asked, and what I had said in, in my initial presentation was, allow them to build a budget at 2%, which was the baseline for a pro forma, which would add the $1,027,000 to their current year, but then document how that $1,024,000 would be reduced if they were held to 0 or if they were held to the I think that if you start at 1%, based on the healthcare costs, salary adjustments alone, you're going to far exceed that 1%. But they're going to have to demonstrate why the number of teachers that are in the existing budget are going to be in next year's budget as well. So I, I guess what I was suggesting to you was, let them build up to 2, but demonstrate how that $1,027,000, if that's what it was, would in fact be reduced from the budget, but don't put together a budget that's going to come in more than that $1,027. Remember, you're talking just about the property tax. If there's other third-party revenues that go up, then they're able to have greater flexibility in the percentage. Conversely, if they lose the $380,000 in, in school aid from the state, which we know they're going to lose, plus they're going to lose the 100 students at $3,000 roughly, because that $3,000 is the loss on the money that follows the student, that's would be about what the state cost is. So they're going to lose probably between $350,000 and $380,000. So what I'm saying to you is, is that, that there's probably a need for starting at the 2 to come up with a realistic program before you look at what are the things that are going to be cut from that. But then you'd still have the opportunity to cut it from that. But again, that was a suggestion, it's certainly, this is the council policy that you guys have got to set as to what, I mean, all I'm saying to you is, is that, that $514,000 is all you're talking about with 1%? And you're not suggesting to them that if they come in with 1%, that you're going to give it to them based on the cuts that they're going to be able to demonstrate?
I was, I'm looking at the student contracts, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, it's not looking at five years, which, again, it may get you some time. The average in five years, what the school has got, the schools have gotten is one, a 1.3% increase. That's five years. That's on page 10. Yes, yes. But again, you know, I believe in kids and I believe in quality education, too, so it's a double-edged sword. So, I mean, if, if you, if the council wants to, we just start to look at 2%, and we can see what that looks like, I don't have a problem with that. Based on, I know, the 7% just in the benefit package, that will kill that $500,000. It will, it really will.
Personally comfortable with the 2% figure that Steve presented us with, I think.
I'd be happy to look at the 2% myself. I really would. And I'm not saying that that's going to fly, because, like you say, it takes three votes at the table, but it gives us at least a starting point to see exactly what that will do, and we'll get those odd numbers in terms of what you can do with 2%. And if it's not acceptable, then we'll make that decision. And if it is, then we'll go from there.
Maybe I look at budgets a little bit differently. I'm still comfortable with the 1%, because I know that we can add to that budget, but I, I just want to see what that's going to look like. But that's just my personal opinion.
I, I would agree with you.
But I will, I, like Joe said, I don't want to be here all night, whatever...
I don't mind being here all night.
I just, I mean, I want to see multiple things, but I know you're on a, a strict time limit, so whatever the majority wants to see, I'm, I'm comfortable with. I just need, I, it's so hard to come up with a number, and I, I, forgive me, I don't remember giving a number last year, but I, without knowing, I mean, I had so many questions about, you know, some programs that you're working on, the DLI program and the one-to-one initiatives, like, I couldn't possibly tell you solidly what number I'm thinking of for property tax transfer until I know what, where those programs stand and if they're on the chopping block, you know? I, I couldn't possibly decide that, so...
I'm just going to go back to, whatever the number is, we're going to talk again.
Right.
Three, Joe?
No, he said, he said he got...
I, I totally heard you say 3%, Joe Beal.
Are we talking reduction?
That number is not cast in stone. That can change. It can go up or it can go down, but we don't really know how it will affect the program, so...
Got it. I'll show you, it, it's lower. Thank you.
Are we done tonight, everybody? Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your input.